I call this meeting of the Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That takes us to our next item, which the recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, an appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. The recommended action is that the Board of Education return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And before we move on to our Veterans Day recognition, I would just like to read our school mission statement. Township High School District 211 serves Township High School District 211 serves the needs of our diverse community by providing relevant and rigorous learning experiences, opportunities for involvement, and strong support systems that empower all students to reach their full potential. Our Veterans Day recognition, Dr. Small.
Thank you. Tomorrow, November 11th, is Veterans Day, is a day reserved for thanking those who fought for us and put their lives on the line for the sake of our country. Across our schools tomorrow, we will host a variety of events, including breakfast tributes, panel discussions, guest class speakers, thank you cards, and displays. It is a day to observe the bravery of the men and women who served our country. I now would ask that any veterans joining us tonight, please stand to be recognized. On behalf of District 211, thank you for your generous and unselfish service to America. Our country would not be where it is now without you. I would also like to personally recognize two veterans who are here tonight and are part of District 211. Mr. Mark Kramer, Board of Education member, would you please stand? Naval Aviator, Mr. Kramer was an aircraft commander flying H-46 helicopter for land and sea operations, including day and night, all-weather resupply, personnel transport, and rescue missions. He also served in significant leadership, operational, and staff assignments during his distinguished career. He was awarded the Legion of Merit and the Meritorious Service Medal. Thank you for your service, Mr. Kramer. Mr. Patrick DeGeorge, Public Relations Specialist, would you please stand? A member of the National Guard, Mr. DeGeorge enlisted in a Stinger missile gunner and held multiple leadership positions throughout his career, including Media Relations Officer in Charge for Joint Task Force Guantanamo Public Affairs. He was deployed to Iraq in 2004, 2008, and 2015. He has been awarded numerous Service and Combat Medals. Thank you for your service, Patrick. Before our meeting began, we played a video showcasing individuals who served in the military before taking jobs in District 211. It will also be available on YouTube and social media later on. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, that takes us to public comments, and the Board is receptive to listening to your comments. However, it is important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue. So the Board members will not be responding to your comments or answering your questions at this time. Aggressive, overly assertive, and disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. That includes foul language, name-calling, jeering, booing, or applauding while someone is speaking. Interruptions of speakers, whether community members, board members, or administrators, verbal assaults or slurs, whether personal or general, and disregard for general conduct will not be tolerated. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to three minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individual's unused time or place may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Teniper at the end here. We have 38 people who signed up. We will listen to all of your comments, because I think that that's very important. And then I have six other individuals that will also be speaking after these 38. I'm going to say the first name, and then I'll read off the first name and the second, and hopefully you can then approach the podium. And I apologize ahead of time if I mispronounce your name. My first speaker is Adixum Pierre Perez.
How much time do they have, Anna?
I beg your pardon. Three minutes. And followed by Dennis Wagner.
Good evening. My name is Adixum Perez, Assistant Pastor of New Life Church, serving the community, Hispanic community in Palatime. God says in His Word, Romans 13, that all authorities were established by Him. Therefore, you have authority in the school District 211 because God gave it to you. God is the One who defines morality according to His perfect holiness, and each human authority needs to make
I can't hear you.
Thank you. Each human authority needs to make decisions that please the divine authority far above public opinion. God also says in His Word that the authorities are placed to do good. Today, you have the opportunity to show God that you will do good for the community by voting according to His will for our children. There is voting no to a proposal that is destructive and has eternal consequences for those who support it. God clearly, excuse me, God clearly speaks in Romans 1 that there are immoral people who not only practice sin, but also give their approval to those who practiced. Today, you will be responsible before God of your decision, and you will have to face Him on Judgment Day, believer or not.
You have one minute remaining.
Based on the Word of God, we believe that God, that good instruction about sexuality is a right given by God to parents only. No institution has the right to do it. Please do not adopt the curriculum updates to align with the NSES. I hope you make a good decision today.
Thank you. Dennis Wagner, followed Ladies and gentlemen, I would really like to make certain that we can get through with all of our speakers. Please refrain from applauding after each one, please. I'm going to ask you one more time. Please be respectful of everyone. Let me call the names of the next speaker so they can hear. I have Dennis Wagner, followed by Jessica Hinkle.
My name is Dennis Wagner. I'm a resident of Hoffman Estates and a parent of a freshman at Framed. And I just want to share some comments about, of course, the Comprehensive Sex Education Bill, and why I think any decision to adopt, or even if you choose, or to adopt or not to adopt, the bill should be taken with a lot of serious consideration of the consequences. It's my understanding that if you choose to opt in and adopt the Senate Bill 18, that it means you hand over the authority to determine what is right, what is taught, I'm sorry, to the Regional Superintendent of Schools. You can correct me for the, later for the record, but I think that's the North Cook region. According to the bill, the role of the Regional Superintendent is to carry out the advice of the State Superintendent of Education, and shall appoint a Comprehensive Personal Health and Safety Education and Comprehensive Sexual Health Advisory Board. As a school board, this means you would be handing over the responsibility to provide guidance for our schools to a regional supervisor and in turn to the state. I hope we take that decision very seriously. I do stand with those urging you to opt out, but what I want to do today is to share some excerpts from the bill. The first one. Course material and instruction may not reflect or promote bias against any person on the basis of the person's race, ethnicity, language, cultural background, citizenship, religion, HIV status, family structure, disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation, or sexual behavior. You know, today's society, we seem to often preach tolerance over a person's cultural background or their religion. It's important to note that if you do
You have one minute remaining.
All right. It's important to note that standards prohibit this. Sorry, you can't, you can't, you have to respect a person's religious beliefs. Furthermore, it says course material and instruction may not proselytize any religion doctrine. The word proselytize does not mean just advocate, it also means to not try to convert. Again, it would be wrong if we do anything that would diminish a person's belief system. Now, what's worse is you look at the bill, and it says course material instruction may not deliberately withhold health-promoting, life-saving information about culturally appropriate healthcare and services, including reproductive health services, which includes no parental This is handing over to the Board the veto power about what you can teach and cannot teach. It goes on even further, it said course material and instruction may not be inconsistent with the ethical and imperative imperatives of medicine and public health. Again
Your speaking time has ended.
Handing over to the state a right that you should have, the decisions should be made by the Board, we elected you, so please take this decision very
Thank you. Jessica Hinkle, followed by Glenn Jobe.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Hinkle. I am a parent of a D-211 student and a soon-to-be student. Back in August, I emailed Dr. Small and the Board regarding the district's plans to adopt or opt out of the national sex education standard. I must say, Dr. Small's response was not only patronizing, but it was dismissive. At that time, our feeder districts 15 and 54 voted against adopting the national standard. At each board meeting since then, there have been numerous community members that have brought up concerns about this standard, and the request for the topic to be added to an agenda item was ignored. Why? It's now November, and the Board members were provided the Fall Curriculum Report and Supplemental Curriculum Report two days ago. In this report, Dr. Small states that the core components are recommended by the Curriculum Committee and represented, or I'm sorry, and presented to her prior to being reviewed by the Board. Reviewed is the key word here. They got this report two days ago. She also asked the Board to approve the new critical learning standard as it was presented two days ago. Parents have been asking to have a discussion about this since August. Dr. Small, the timing of your recommendation, knowing that this is a contentious topic, yet again is patronizing and dismissive. By the time, by, but this time, your target is the entire community, not just me. It is, is it your intent to silence this community, or is it your intent to blindly follow a political agenda? It should be, your intent should be to provide our students with the education they need for after, or for life after high school. One of my major concerns that I see besides the content itself is that our feeder districts opted out of this. What is our plan to bridge the gap? Is this something that the Board can determine tonight? Again, think with, again, I think with such a large topic, you are asking
You have one minute remaining.
them to basically rubber stamp your recommendations. I get that five, five of the Board members here have no interest in what the parents like me have to say. However, this isn't about concerned parents versus the Board, it is about the Board doing the right thing. Can you, can you say that you have had time to comprehend the changes, all these changes, and what they mean, and how they impact our kids? Or how you're going to bridge that gap between the feeder district and the 211 curriculum? I urge you to request more time to review this and request more time to hear what your community members have to say. And I'd like to applaud Mr. Dombrowski and Mr. Kramer for always responding and considering the concerns of the D-211 parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Jobe, followed by David Klimmer. Glenn Jobe, followed by David Klimmer.
Good evening. I am Glenn Jobe. I, well, I have grandchildren in the high school system. And I wish I had opportunity to ask you Board members this evening about the moral standard that you're using to make such a decision as this. You only have two options, either objective or subjective. And when you go to subjective, then that makes you ultimately responsible for everything that is done. We gave the Pledge of Allegiance just a few moments ago, acknowledging that there is a God. And with that God, there comes what is called moral law, that our nation used to understand, but we don't understand it anymore, because we think that we can make up moral law ourselves without
Hey, please, ladies and gentlemen, let the gentleman speak, because you're going into his time. All right, we're going to, let's keep everything tempered down. Thank you. Please, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so we do have what we call moral law, which is, in a sense, altness, which says that I'm obligated some way to do what I believe is right and avoid what I think is wrong. And that, and when we talk to one another about that, we know what that means. But this has left us in favor of politics, whoever has the loudest voice. But God really has the loudest voice because He understands the consequences of the actions that we take. In the Declaration of Independence, for instance, our separation from England was based upon the principles of the laws of nature and nature's God. And without that, we are in the open sea without compass
You have one minute remaining.
of reference. Earlier this year, the Supreme Court realized it got itself in trouble over abortion, and they turned it over to the states. You are going to be making a decision, but if that decision turns out to be wrong, who are you going to turn it over? The buck stops with you. And you really need to consider this before you go on any further. Will we be coming back, say, a year from now, or two years from now, and discussing such things as bestiality, which in other countries, especially in Scandinavia and so on, is already present? We still have laws against that. And what will this do to our children? I strongly urge you to consider what direction you decide to go with this, and how it will fall upon your shoulders, and the decision you make will continue to cause problems for future generations.
Your speaking time has ended.
And I thank you very kindly for your time. David Klimmer, David Klimmer, followed by Susan Wide. Is there a David Klimmer? Followed by Susan Wide.
Good evening. My name is David, and segregate, divide, brainwash, obey. This is all the government wants to do to us. You're acting today like judges on our kids' future. Most of you probably have kids in colleges or college graduates, and you don't really care about our kids' future. Remember that you, all of you, and all of us, one day will be judged on our decisions. Our kids are our kids, and they don't need more brainwashing. We should concentrate on their future and who they want to be when they grow up, instead of what gender or sexuality. Social media are causing enough of damage to our kids. Suicide
You're going into his time.
It's short. Suicide, depression, anxiety are on the rise, and this is what, as a community, we should concentrate on, not on agendas that are being thrown at you and us. Do you know what I see when I look at these parents behind me? True fighters that care. I encourage you to be one too. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Susan Wide, followed by Bonnie Miller. Okay, I called a name.
What's the name?
Well, you have to listen, so I can, Susan, ladies, gentlemen, you can't hear me because All right, I'm going to ask one last time. Please allow me to call the names. And you need to be respectful, please. All right, Susan Wide, and it'll be followed by Bonnie Miller.
Hello, can you guys hear me okay? I'm Susan. I live in Arlington Heights. I do not have kids. However, I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner. I've worked in the emergency room. I've seen kids come in that are very confused about who they are, and it's really sad. People might say, oh, they're, they're in such desperate time of depression, suicidality, because they're rejected. I don't believe that. I believe that everybody back here and in the communities open arms to all kids. I think everybody here probably loves these kids as much as they love their own kids. They are not rejected, they are confused, they are hurt, they are in darkness, they are believing lies that the world is telling them, that they are male but they should be female, or whatever the spectrum is that they're, they're speaking about or hearing about. And so I just want to advocate for kids that they don't need to hear this confusion about who they are. God made them a certain gender, male or female. We don't need to teach them anything else. He is the Creator, that is the way He created them. Do not give these kids more confusion than the world is already giving them. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie Miller, followed by Jane Van.
Hello, my name is Bonnie Miller, and I live in D-211. I believe that having an informed electorate is important, and I support the Door Hanger campaign that speaks against the curriculum of the NSES in our schools. Tonight, I'd like to address some of the accusations that have been made against what we are doing. Accusation number one, we oppose teaching sex ed in school. We do not, and we have never said anything that remotely suggests it. What we want is reasonable sex ed, things we can all agree on, like basic biology and reproduction. The following is not reasonable. Standard SH-10 SM-1, which says, demonstrate the steps to using barrier methods correctly. Example, external and internal condoms, dental dams. First of all, demonstrate? Do we really want our teachers talking about dental dams and demonstrating them? For those of you who don't know what that is, it is a latex sheet that is used between the mouth and the vagina or anus during oral sex. Parents, is that something you want taught to your children? Accusation number two, by opposing the NSES curriculum, we support grooming. We object to none of the anti-grooming standards. Sexual grooming is the very reason we oppose NSES. Consider CHR-10 SM-1, which says, describe the human sexual response cycle, including the role of hormones and pleasure. And CHR-10 IC-1, which says, describe effective ways to communicate consent, personal boundaries, and desires as they relate to pleasure. So if we implement these standards, teachers will be discussing sexual pleasure with our kids, as well as teaching them how to negotiate it. This is grooming.
You have one minute remaining.
It is obvious that students can be taught to recognize grooming without adopting the NSES standards. The district has been doing that, this for years. Parents, just a warning, if they vote yes, it will only be a matter of time before D-15 will adopt these standards, and they will be teaching our third graders how to masturbate, and our sixth graders about oral and anal sex. Board members, please send the school administrators back to the drawing board. Stop the madness and vote no. If you don't, we will work hard to replace you.
Jane Van, followed by Joyce Slavic. The name I called was Jane Van, followed by Joyce Slavic. If Jane is
My name is Jane Van, and I am a resident of 211. Many individuals have been speaking before school boards with concerns over books on the library shelves, curriculum being used in history, science, and health ed classes. Oftentimes, the speakers state that what is being taught doesn't coincide with their religious beliefs. They ask for restrictions to be placed on what facts can be taught because they personally don't agree or believe in the facts presented. The responsibility of a public school is to educate our students with current factual information. It is not the educator's place to decide whose religious morals will be considered. Because we live in a diversely religious country, our public schools should not concern themselves with any religious teaching. If you, as a parent, are not comfortable with the factual information being taught to your child, it might help both you and your child to have open dialogues in your own homes. Explain to them why you are uncomfortable, explain your religious and moral beliefs. A student being exposed to beliefs contradictory to their parents will not be in harm's way. Frankly, it may cause them to respect and tolerate other differences.
Thank you. Joyce Slavic, followed by Kathy Reesberg.
Hi, my name is Joyce Slavic. I'm a parent in the district. I see that a review of sexual education is on the agenda tonight, obviously, and I'm glad to see that D-211 appears to be pretty well in line with the national standards already, and our well-qualified staff has identified what needs updating. I'm also happy to see there's been a review of how well our curriculum addresses diversity, equity, and inclusion, and where we can and should be improving. Calls for curriculum oversight by parents is puzzling, considering that parents can look in Schoology, show up at Open House, talk to their students, teachers, or administrators, or just talk to their kids about what's in the syllabus. If you don't want your child to get comprehensive sex education, opt them out. Spreading disinformation about what is in the bill and cherry-picking words from the standards to keep other people's kids from learning about healthy relationships, consent, and gender identity and expression is sad and pathetic. Right-wing extremists keep trying to stoke division and hate in our community by pushing for book bans, promoting anti-LGBTQ hate, and attacking diversity initiatives. According to NPR, since January 2021 According to NPR, since January 2021, there have been 35 states and 137 bills seeking to restrict education on American history, race, gender, and sexuality. CDC survey results show that 43% of transgender youth have been bullied on school property, 29% of transgender youth, 21% of gay and lesbian youth, and 22% of bisexual sexual youth have attempted suicide. Adults modeling bullying and hateful behavior in these very meetings is painful and disgusting. Good news is that political reports that voters are far more worried about schools' day-to-day concerns than the right wing extremist creepy obsession over sex and gender identity. Katrina Mendiola from the NEA states, what people care about are the same thing that, things that educators care about. They want fully funded schools, they want educators to have livable and competitive pay, and they want mental health support for their kids. Extremists are focused on crushing public education and replacing it with private schools.
You have one minute remaining.
They lack transparency and don't support diversity, equity, and inclusion. Often, they are promoting indoctrination of their religious values while diverting public funds from our public schools. Based on our elections this week, I believe that like most of America, our district does not believe in book bans and doing away with health and sex education, which has been here for many, many years. We don't want to see guns throughout our schools. Instead, we do want to see our diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives thrive. We want mental health support. We want kids to learn honest, accurate history with all its blemishes, as well as its points of pride, and we want support for all our students. We don't want to see hate win. We may not be able to save all kids from harm and mental health struggles, but that should absolutely be our goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Reisberg, followed by Jeannie Squan.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Reisberg and as a District 211 taxpayer for the past 44 years, I want to express again my gratitude to all of you on the District 211 School Board for working with the District 211 staff and this community of parents and grandparents so that all students in 211 will continue to have the freedom to learn all subjects, including history and sex education, and the freedom to read the books of their individual choice. And no matter their zip codes, their ethnic background, faith preference, or gender identity, these students deserve our complete support and deserve to know that no matter what, they are not alone in this world and are deserving of the basic human rights of respect, value, and worth. Yet, we know so well these days that there are some national and local politicians who have spread a message of fear, hate, and division, a message that others, those who are different in any way, and is fueled by dark money groups to gain and hold on to political power and build a political base. This campaign of disinformation has taken hold in many communities across America and even here in the northwest suburbs of Chicago, and is designed to intentionally create a sense of distrust in our public institutions, like our public schools and our municipal libraries, in the hopes that a few negative vocal voices and sometimes angry voices can limit the freedom to learn and the freedom to read for all students, not just their own children, by questioning the judgment, motives, or integrity of the staff. There is no doubt that our students deserve the freedom to learn about other youth and adults who are uniquely designed and look like our students, the freedom to learn about those who have a similar background or historical roots as they do, and the freedom to learn about those who have a gender identity like theirs and who have made significant contributions in the past or currently playing an important role in today's world.
You have one minute remaining.
Fortunately, most parents have shared vision that all children will be respected, valued, and treated with dignity and will thrive and reach their potential because they have found a safe place in their schools, a safe place in their communities, and a safe place in this nation, just like so many people have been able to find a safe place within the hearts and the homes of their family. So my thanks again to each of you on this board for providing a safe place for our children to experience the freedom to learn and the freedom to read, and a happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Thank you. Jeannie Squan. Squan, followed by Sharice Ramisetti.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Squan and I graduated from PTHS U rah 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 in 1966. And I have loved the district ever since. I just moved back. First of all, you can remove your child from sex education with no penalty. Information, understanding, and role practice are necessary for our young people to make good choices. Teaching ethical norms to our students protecting them from, will protect them from those who would take advantage of them. Having practiced ways to shield oneself from exploitation and having an entire social structure, their peers, with that ethics surrounding them is an armor that will help them keep and keep them safe. Societies and families that have secrets and taboos make children helpless. Ignorance of human diversity does not stop that diversity. If our students are not educated about sexual diversity, they will be crippled by that ignorance when they go out in the world. Our students may go to universities where their professors have diverse sexual orientations. Their employers might have a different sexual orientation. Definitions and understanding do not cause non-hetero or non-binary behaviors. They promote respect and comfort for all of us, not just for those with different sexual values and orientations. If definitions and understanding could change one's sexual orientation, wouldn't it follow if I know the definition of the word genius that I might become one? Knowledge is power. It makes us powerful to be the best that we can be, no matter who we love and how we are levelled. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharice Ramisetti, followed by Michael Gasso.
Hi, my name is Sharice Ramisetti and I'm a resident of District 211 in Schaumburg for the last two decades. I have not much to say, but I, I've heard everybody saying, and I'm appealing to your moral conscience, everybody has that, and the board right here, I think you are parents and some of you may be grandparents, and I'm going to ask this question, you may not have to answer now. Who taught you in your school about sex education? Who taught your parents about the sex education or your grandparents? Is there anything new under the sun? Ever since the world exists, man and woman came together, brought a child. What are we teaching our children? Nothing but the... When I read this, it's all graphical. And I'm appealing to your conscience tonight, whether you adopt it or do not adopt it. It's not only your children, but you have thousands of children at your discretion. So tonight, when you go to bed, think about this, how you learnt about your sexual orientation. I am not going against anyone or any member or any resident here. All I'm appealing is, the school board is here to teach STEM about the future. Children know what they're doing, what they learned, and I come from a different background, as you may see. And I'm asking you, answer your moral conscience and answer all the children. One question I have left is, did you ask the children what they want?
You have one minute remaining.
All right, I'll give my next minute to the next speaker. Thank you.
Okay, Michael Gasso, followed by Peter Gardner.
My name is Michael Gasso and most people call me Mick. I am the Northwest Regional Director for the Public School Exit Program from Illinois Family Institute. IFI is a faith-based organization that is pro-life, pro-marriage, that is marriage between one man and one woman. I am a recently retired public school teacher and I retired because of what I saw with Senate Bill 818. I'm here to tell you about options available to public schools where students excel academically, emotionally, and spiritually, and why you need to get your children away from the horrific agenda of this district and state. Part of my message is from Alex Newman of the Executive Director of the Nationwide Public School Exit Program and the Epoch Times. Imagine the school building is on fire and your precious children are trapped inside. You can hear the blood curdling screams growing louder, the flames are getting bigger, and the heat is getting hotter. Your heart races. Even standing outside, you feel your children's pain and horror. No matter how hard you try to tell yourself it'll be okay, you know they're in mortal danger. You look frantically searching for somebody to do something. You cry help, but there's no response and you hear no sirens in the distance. In fact, no one is coming to rescue your children, certainly not the arsonist politicians or the educational establishment who set the building on fire in the first place. You finally realize that if you don't act soon, catastrophe is inevitable and your children are doomed. What do you do? There's only one answer. Run inside, grab your children and run. The time has come to treat what is going on in D 211 like the deadly threat that it is. In fact, the burning building isn't an adequate analogy for the terrible indoctrination in public schools. From previous meetings, it seems inevitable that this board will adopt Senate Bill 818 or use the candor curriculum, which is just as bad. Parents, do you know what books are in your libraries? Possibly the disgusting Gender Queer, which is in the Barrington High School library, a book that if you took it out on Roseville Road and showed it to a minor, you'd be arrested for pornography. According to reporter Chris Rufo, what about the Pritzker family donating more than $20 million to fund Lurie's Children's Hospital Gender and Sex Development Experiments? Lurie has partnered with the Pritzker family to promote radical gender theory like kink, BDSM, and trans-friendly sex toys in various school districts, including Mundaline High School among others, while promoting LGBTQ-friendly sex toys for teens. How do you know that won't happen in 211? Why risk that and the terrible scores that you'll find in this district? For example, though rated exemplary, Schaumburg High School is only at 39% in meeting or exceeding proficiency in English language art. Whether a private school or a homeschool co-op, your children will flourish and not be subject to the next evil in public schools. Ladies and gentlemen, and yes, there are only two genders, Dietrich Bonhoeffer said, silence in the face of evil is evil itself. God will not hold us guiltless. Not to speak is to speak, not to act is to act. It's time, ladies and gentlemen, the school building is on fire. Get your children out of public schools now. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Gardner, followed by Natasha Maldonado. Followed by Natasha Maldonado.
Thank you again to all the veterans. Very much appreciate your sacrifice. Also to the police officers here tonight, I apologize that you have to be here on such a luxury freedom that our veterans had fought for. So I have to admit, right off the bat, I'm a little bitter because we have a child here and we're sending him to Catholic grade school. Luckily, we have the resources to be able to do that. We made that decision based on what these ideologies were coming through. So, you know, we wanted to give him an opportunity to be a child and again, we had the privilege to be able to do that, so we definitely appreciate that. We're thinking about sending him to the public high schools, but this is a very concerning thing. You know, we want to expose our child to certain things when the time is right and these ideologies that are coming across these days are just kind of too far out there and we, we want our child to be a little bit more grown, a little bit more mature before he gets exposed to any of this type of stuff. And we don't think school should be where that should happen. You know, this, this gender ideology in particular is kind of crazy. I know a previous speaker mentioned something about, you know, if you say you're something than you are, so why not be a genius? Well, the gender ideology is basically saying that. It's saying that a boy can be a girl just because they say that they're a girl. Well, I know I'm not a genius and if I say I'm a genius, that doesn't make me a genius. Just like if a boy says he's a girl, that doesn't mean he's a girl. He's still a boy and he just, maybe he has some other problems that he needs to solve, but you know, that should be between the parent, maybe some professional help to help him either way. I'm not too sure, you know, what the, the results of that would be and stuff, or what that would look like. But I also know one other thing is, is that when you teach somebody or when you expose somebody...
You have one minute remaining.
That goes fast. When you teach somebody or expose somebody to a particular idea or thought, that person can't unlearn that. So these children who are being exposed to this at this time, it might not be their time to be exposed to that, but they're not going to be able to forget what they're supposed to, exposed to. So I'm just asking, you know, I would be better not to have any sex education in school. That'd be my personal preference. You know, they mentioned when I was in, growing up, I grew up in Arlington Heights, and they said that, oh no, we have to teach sex education to help stop unwanted pregnancies. Well, that didn't work. You know, it seems like we have just as many unwanted, if not more, than when we did when I was back in school. So my, my wife and I, we have to make a decision in the next couple of years. Our son will be high school age in two years and I hope that we can send him to FREM because I'm tired of paying the tax dollars and the money to send to a broken school.
Thank you. Natasha Maldonado, followed by Jim Schumus.
Hi, my name's Natasha. I'm a D 211 resident and mom, and I'd like to ask you, the board, to vote no tonight on the new sex education standards. What I'm concerned about is that it's going to, like this past gentleman said, drive people either out of this school district, because you know Barrington already said no to this, and drive students into private schools or even homeschooling, because parents, obviously, the majority, majority don't want this taught in the school. So yeah, that's just the reality. But more, more people are actually doing alternative schools and not doing public schools, and it's a shame because we've had great public schools throughout the years. So I'm not sure why things have gone so far south, but they obviously have. Otherwise, all these parents wouldn't be here tonight. So what I'm concerned about also is that you're going to disenfranchise the low-income students that can't afford to go to a private school. Or like me, I'm a single mom, so I work full-time. I couldn't homeschool my kids, but I tell you what, I'd work three jobs for them not to learn about masturbation when they're freshmen in high school. It's just kind of gross. No one, no one wants their teacher to teach that to them. That's nothing that needs to be taught in the, in the schools. And I'd also just, would like you to just put your personal bias aside, whatever it is, you know, political, and, and really represent the, the parents, and that's what you're supposed to represent. And actually, if Kim Cavell could actually pay attention to the parents that are speaking rather than do Sudoku all night, I'd appreciate it. I'd like to ask the parents to stand up that want no to this sex education. Can you please stand up if you do not want your parents? These are the people you represent. So the majority says no, so we expect you to vote as the majority, okay? This is what the parents want. Respect the parents.
All right. Next is Jim Schumus, followed by Roger Kleffman. Is that person not here? Jim Schumus. Looks like S C H M A U S. Okay. And followed by Roger Kleffman.
Hi, my name is Jim Schmaus. I've been in District 211 for the past 30-plus years. I've had sons go to the schools all through their school years and now I have grandkids coming up. I've taken a look at the SB 818 and quite honestly, I'm appalled by what I see and what I've learned about it. I've also seen a lot of the books that are in the libraries in the school. Quite frankly, there, many of them are inappropriate for young children, okay?
Okay, one second, one second. I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Okay. I know we're living in some crazy times. We just went through a couple of years of this plandemic and it was pretty crazy on everyone. Students have sacrificed and, and lost a lot of, a lot of learning years in the past couple of years, and evidenced by the report cards that have been coming out on the educational system in Illinois. Beyond that, we've got a Supreme Court justice that can't even define a woman. We're living in crazy times, but I'm going to ask that you guys can strongly consider voting no on SB 818. It's, it's just not right. I think we need to focus on the kids' education, reading, writing, arithmetic, that kind of stuff, and get these kids back so that they're, when they graduate, they're in a position... position to actually live productive lives. And that's what I hope comes out of this.
Thank you. Roger Clefman, followed by Jennifer Dahl.
My name is Roger Clefman. I've paid school taxes for 45 years. Three kids went through the Hoffman Estates School. I've been interested in schools all my life, most recently the reading and math scores. But now the National Sex Education Standards has got my attention. Parents don't want them imposed on their kids. But I read the National Sex Education Standards in detail. Here's what I found. Oh, before that, I have to say that my premise is sex education is necessary. When you have a small child who's touched inappropriately, he's got to know where he can go, that he's been touched inappropriately and where to go for help. If you take a teenager who's being bullied into creating a sext text or sext picture, he's got to know what, they have to know what to do. So that's why my interest. And when I read the, the standards, on page seven, elementary schools, a median of 17.6% taught all 26 health topics, or 82.4% did not teach all topics. In, let's see, grades six through eight, 43% of the topics were taught, 57% were not taught. The question isn't not sex education or sex education. The question is sex education and what topics? And a collaborative approach between the board, the teachers, the parents can produce that type of program. Now, I forgot what I was going to say.
You have one minute remaining.
Okay, so this collaborative, oh yes, this collaborative effort can take place, and that's, oh, this is based on anecdotal information that I read from some of the research reports dealing with the standards. And that's where my push for collaborative effort comes from. The only other thing I would request or to be considered is that there be complete transparency and the opportunity to have the courses or the topics previewed by the parents before, before they're presented. So that's my position. Take it for what it's worth.
Thank you. All right. Jennifer Dahl, followed by Toni Neely.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Dahl, and I'm a pediatric nurse, and I'm the mother of two students in this district. I am holding the curriculum in my hands that you are about to vote on, and I'm going to read parts of it so that you, the community, and every parent can hear these words read out loud. This isn't disinformation, as I'm reading the standards themselves and I'm not cherry-picking information. Your feeder districts 15 and 54 opted out of teaching comprehensive sex ed. What is going to happen to these kids when they enter high school? When five to six-year-olds are supposed to list medically accurate names for body parts, including the genitals? Define gender, gender identity, and gender role stereotypes. Discuss the range of ways people express their gender and how gender role stereotypes may limit behavior. Define reproduction and explain that all living things may have the capacity to reproduce. This used to start in 4th grade, parents, now we're talking by the end of 2nd grade. Define child sexual abuse and identify behaviors that would be considered child sexual abuse. When 8 to 11-year-olds are supposed to explain common human sexual development and the roles of hormones like romantic and sexual feelings, masturbation, mood swings, timing of pubertal onset, describe the role of hormones that they play in the physical, social, cognitive, and emotional changes during adolescence and the potential role of hormone blockers on young people who identify as transgender. Distinguish between sex assigned at birth and gender identity and explain how they may or may not differ. Define sexual orientation, define STDs, including HIV, and clarify common myths about transmission by 5th grade. When 11 to 14-year-olds are supposed to define sexual consent and sexual agency, describe human reproductive systems, including the external and internal body parts and their functions, and that there are naturally occurring variations in human bodies like intersex vulvas, circumcised and intact penises. Define vaginal, oral, and anal sex. Explain there are many methods of short and long-term contraception that are safe and effective and describe how to access them. List at least four methods of contraception available without a prescription, which are abstinence, condoms, emergency contraception, and withdrawal. Describe pregnancy testing, the signs of pregnancy, and pregnancy options, including parenting, abortion, and adoption. Discuss biomedical approaches to prevent STDs, vaccines, and HIV. Define racism and intersectionality and describe their impacts on sexual health. Incoming freshmen will not have received any of this information, and they are just supposed to what? Step right into a mess of confusion? It will be your fault when there is an increase in the mental health crisis here in 211. It will be your fault when 15 and 54 vote yes, and our children will be exposed to things they morally and ethically should not be. Lisa, when you stated in your superintendent report, you are teaching everything except two standards, Kim and Nancy went and read the curriculum, and none of what's in the proposed 9th to 10th grade curriculum was in there. You are lying.
Next is Toni Neely, followed by Calvin Lindstrom.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Thank you for pronouncing my last name right. No one ever does. I'm originally going to talk a little bit about the levy that happened the last time, three weeks ago when we had this meeting. But as you all know, we're getting, they're going to max our taxes going forward. And the people who are in agreeance with that don't have any financial background. So they're the one telling us, we need to pay more money. But I didn't see anything coming from their side to meet us in the middle. But I'm not here to discuss that right now. There's a large difference between the teaching of biology and physiology of sex and sexual acts. Other countries are killing us in math, science, language skills, okay? But we're focused on this. What is the thinking behind this? What's the goal? You don't have to be a genius to figure out the goal is to mainstream pedophilia. Let's call it what it is. It's immoral. It's unethical. It's disgusting. It's perverted. You are supporting adults teaching kids sex acts. Adults! Let me put the warning out to everybody. If you're an adult and you want to teach my kids sex acts, you're going to have a problem with me, and you don't want that. This is called pedophilia, and any adult that's practicing this should be prosecuted and jailed. If you support this in my book, you're kind of a pedophile as it is. And you should be kept as far away from children as possible. That's all I got to say about that.
Thank you. Calvin Lindstrom, followed by Mukund Dewan. Calvin Lindstrom.
Sorry, thank you.
Followed by Mukund Dewan.
To Dr. Small and Mrs. Anna Klimkowitz and the other members of the D-211 School Board, I express my appreciation for you allowing me to speak this evening. I'm Pastor Calvin Lindstrom of the Church of Christian Liberty in Arlington Heights, Illinois. I'm present this evening on behalf of church members, quite a few, who are part of District 211. One of the accusations made against conservative Christians is that we are guilty of trying to impose our religious worldviews on others. I want to briefly address this accusation. We go back to our nation's founding. I would date that to 1620, the Mayflower Compact, which begins with the words, "In the name of God, amen." And further, this document speaks of the glory of God and even the advancement of the Christian faith. If you study all of the early state constitutions, they reflected Christian principles. It is true that our U.S. Constitution did take a different approach, and yet it is very clear that our founding fathers looked to the wisdom of God's Word for the establishment of our nation. Did we always follow God's Word? No. We were not always a perfect nation, but we, we attempted that. Did you know that Thomas Jefferson, who was not an Orthodox Christian, do you know where he went to church many Sundays? In the U.S. Capitol Building. Church services were held in the United States Capitol Building. And I first learned this actually from a Jewish rabbi, and I've confirmed it with my own research. In 1892, Justice Josiah David Brewer, writing in Church of the Holy Trinity versus the U.S., he said, "The unanimous Supreme Court decision was this is a Christian nation." It must be appreciated that all laws, all education reflects a religious worldview. It could be Christian, it could be Jewish, it could be Muslim.
You have one minute remaining.
It could be humanistic. The great thinker R.J. Rushton, he said, "When a nation changes its laws or even changes its education, it is changing its religion." There is absolutely nothing wrong with the parents of this district wanting that the new sex education standards not be taught. Anyone that is labeling us as seeking to impose our own religion must also be honest and say the same thing about themselves. Why are you trying to impose your humanistic worldview on our children? If conservative Christians are being asked this question, it is only proper we ask a similar question. Why are you trying to impose your worldview, your religion, on the 12,000 students in this district? Amen.
Thank you. Mukund Dewan, followed by Pat Fedorski.
Hello. My name is Mukund Dewan, a senior at Fremont High School. But the reality is, this school board already knows that. Because for the last 11 months, I've been repeatedly meeting with administration, speaking at board meetings, and have been raising awareness regarding teacher misconduct by John Tygerd and Matthew Moore at Fremont High School, something that this school board and every level of district administration has been made aware of. Everything from discriminatory behavior with students suffering from mental health illnesses like myself, to the ignoring of transphobic slurs and homophobic comments made to other students, to speaking negatively about students in front of classrooms full of their peers, and so much more that I'm just unable to go into detail about, but have explicitly outlined every time I've met with any administrator. None of it has been taken seriously, and I have not been taken seriously. In my most recent meeting with Lisa Small and Anna Klimkowitz a few weeks ago, I blatantly asked if they could not only believe me, but also the other students who had shared their stories with me, but asked to remain anonymous. And I was met with a no. Can you imagine? A district which prides itself on being one of the best in the state, and a school like Fremont where students are constantly reminded of how high achieving and good of a school it is, how can a district and school like that very clearly state that they do not believe students and parents bringing up issues that are so serious and have very serious ramifications? Not to mention the fact that Board President Anna Klimkowitz made it very clear to myself and my mother that she was only a volunteer and that her position was a public service. And to that I say, you certainly have been doing your job as a volunteer. If you only see yourself as a volunteer, please leave the seat open for someone who does care and will listen to students. And to you, Lisa, you said to me that you wanted to outline what you've done and proceeded to tell me nothing regarding any action you've taken, and proposed that those anonymous students come forward with their names so that they can be reached out to. How does that matter? This district has completely overlooked the fact that the issue doesn't lie within students, but the teachers themselves. And to the rest of the school board, how come you, Tim McGowan, haven't reached out to me since I emailed you asking me to meet when mental health was an issue that you ran on to get your seat, not even an email response? Miss, you, Mr. Rosenbloom, who I've met with before, how can you sit idly by and see me come speak month in and month out? And to each board member sitting there, right now, you chose to run for that seat. It isn't something to take lightly, and I am not one to be taken lightly either. I've stated so many times that I will continue my fight till this district can give any sort of justice to my, my parents, myself, my peers, and their parents as well. This is no longer about misconduct that took place. That damage has already been done. But this is about the inaction of this administration and zero belief in its own students. As I told board volunteer Anna Klimkowitz after our meeting, this district will come to regret not listening to its own students because we are fierce. We're a group that doesn't back down to a fight just because we're given no action. The students have been behind me this whole time, demand action just as much as I do, and we will not stop. So until I'm back here again next month, I hope this district is ready to hold people accountable. And if not, eventually its students won't be at risk. It'll be your seats.
Patrick Fedorski, followed by Eric Vagin. Patrick Fedorski, followed by Eric Vagin. Or Pat, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay. I'm going to talk very fast because I want to get it all in. My name is Pat Fedorski.
You can move the microphone a little bit closer to your mouth.
There you go. Here, wait, I want to be loud, okay, and fast. Now, you can start my timer?
You're started.
Oh, okay. My name is Pat Fedorski, mother of two Schaumburg High School graduates and grandmother of two future Schaumburg High School students. Thank you for allowing us to express our views on sex ed bill 818. I hope that each of you have come here tonight with open minds and ears to hear what the majority of parents are telling you. I hope that none of you have come with your yes vote predetermined and that our efforts to stop this comprehensive sex ed bill are not simply an exercise in futility. The descriptive term comprehensive has got to be the greatest understatement ever, as this bill goes so far beyond the common understanding of sex ed. It contains sexually charged content with an underlying ideological agenda. Why do I say ideological agenda? Well, you would be hard-pressed to find traditional family advocacy groups or faith-based groups supporting this bill. As an initiative of Planned Parenthood Illinois Action, ACLU of Illinois, Rainbow Cafe LGBTQ Center, Peoria Proud, and other LGBTQ organizations, 818 has no dearth of not-so-family friendly backers. Researching the bill's contents was like falling into a cesspool that had no bottom. Were I to detail the specifics of the most aberrant sex acts in 818 in this public forum tonight, you would cut off my mic, as has been done in school board meetings across the nation. The content, too pornographic and offensive to be read aloud to our school board, boards, but perfectly okay for teachers to present to our children. While they teach the importance of consent, our kids cannot consent. Oh, parenthetically, of course, they can be that weird child whose parents say no to this grooming. And yes, that is exactly what this is, despite its proponents' protestations to the contrary. Tonight's time limit does not allow for the full reveal of 818's dark curriculum. This requires extensive research on the part of concerned parents, as the schools, I fear, will not be forthright with providing this information. A deep dive into the NSES, National Sex Education Standard Guidelines, is needed. K-12 schools in Illinois that offer sex ed must, by Illinois law, align their curriculum with NSES, which is the creation of organizations consistent with abortion rights and LGBTQ inclusion. I hope to be able to provide copies at the next meeting to all interested parents of the many enumerated NSES guidelines. Finally, some things once seen cannot be unseen, and some things once heard cannot be unheard. I fear for the hearts and minds of our kids if this agenda goes forward. Please vote no on 818. And by the way, pornographic books, quite available and disgusting, I can't remember the names, in D-211 libraries. You all know it. Do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vote no. Eric Vagin, followed by Steve Papel. All right, ma'am, ma'am. Okay, Eric, and then followed by Steve Papel.
Hi, I'm Eric. I live in Hoffman Estates. I have three children that are on the way to high school. I do appreciate that you all are making an appearance to make the time to listen to your constituency. It wasn't part of my remarks, but whatever that, that kid said, I would highly recommend you take him seriously. He, he needs some adult support. So take the kid seriously. To cut to the chase, I would implore you not to vote to take on these new sex ed standards. These topics are best left to be discussed by parents with their own children. I do not believe that either yourselves or your employees at the schools have any expertise or are entitled to teach this topic to other people's kids. or are entitled to teach this topic to other people's kids. I would maintain that you should vote no. Please stay in your lane. I have no illusions that these topics are not being currently discussed amongst the students at the schools already. We know that they're high schoolers. We get it. But nevertheless, to navigate such issues in a mature fashion, it's a family matter. It's not a public matter. You guys are the public school. If we were to talk about these, as other people said in the room, in a public forum, we'd have these guys at our door. Thank you, guys, for being here, but I don't want to call these guys on my kid's sex ed teacher. That ain't right. I've heard it maintained by those who disagree with me and with those who believe like me that we are trying to impose our morality or our religious views on other people's kids. First of all, it's not true, and it's actually twisted. You've inverted it here. The fact is, we do simply do not want the imposition of your worldview, of this worldview, imposed upon our children. This is a worldview. Although it's godless, it's certainly religious. I don't want this religion being talked to my kid. And this sex ed, as his pastor back here said, it's a religion. Some of you say I can opt out. You know what I'd say? If you want to teach this to your kids, teach it to your kids. And don't do it on my dime. There's a sign back there that says, somewhere one of them said, "Oh, we don't consent." That's the language that's in this. So you know what? I'll use your own language to you. We do not, we do not consent.
Thank you. Stephen Papel, followed by Kristen Steele.
Hello. My name is Steve Papelli, and I'm a concerned parent. I'm here tonight to strongly urge you to reject the implementation of the new NSES. The 9th and 10th Grade Standard states, "Differentiate between sex assigned at birth, gender identity, and gender expression." The wording of the standard itself is designed to confuse. Sex is not, quote, "assigned at birth by the doctor, but given by God." There is also an implication that biological sex, gender identity, and expression are somehow interchangeable. Let's be clear. Two sexes are a moral and scientific truth since the creation of man for thousands of years. There is no objective evidence for anything else. Only in the last few decades has the dialogue changed, and changed it has. Facebook has something like 58 gender categories. Others claim more. This is so ridiculous, only some highly educated so-called experts could have come up with this nonsense. Abigail Schreier, author of Irreversible Damage, notes historically that gender dysphoria affects 1 in 10,000 boys and 1 in 30,000 girls. Today, 1 in 20 college students identify as trans. In the U.K., there was a 4,000% spike between 2009 and 2019. Science or biology has not changed. This is nothing but an ideology pushed on the most impressionable, our children, by culture and, worse yet, our schools. The American College of Pediatricians reports 80 to 95% of prepuberty children with gender dysphoria will experience resolution if not exposed to medical intervention and social affirmation. Researcher Lisa Littman finds 2/3 of trans have been diagnosed with at least one mental health disorder prior to gender dysphoria. Many have been sexually abused. So we find ourselves here tonight. D-211 fails at teaching our kids reading, writing, and arithmetic. The latest report shows student proficiency of 65% science, 49% math, and 42% English. When I was in school, these grades were called an F. Clearly, you're not good at your job. Stop the totalitarian-style social engineering and pushing perversion of facts to our kids and start doing what you're hired to do. Remember, you work for citizens of the district. For the small number of kids who generally deal with gender confusion, we must treat them with compassion and love and get them competent help. However, you cannot have true love without truth. We are doing no favors to anyone by validating a lie, whether it's a boy can be a girl, a man can have a baby, or a human can be a cat or a wolf. Those are things now. And lastly, these matters belong under the authority and oversight of the parents, not the schools. These are our children, not yours. A vote for this is simply a vote for evil. Thank you.
Kristen Steele, followed by Jerry Frida. You're gonna need to listen, please. Kristen Steele, followed by Jerry Frida.
People are clapping, and people who aren't clapping can't hear, so...
I understand that. So I'm asking everyone to please, please be respectful, and we can keep going along.
Okay. Good evening. Tonight I have some questions. Mr. Schumacher, as Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and father of four, would you like your daughter's male health teacher to teach her about anal sex or how to pleasure herself? Furthermore, is this curriculum one you would approve of in classrooms or environment at Willow Creek Church? Mr. McGowan, as a father with a baby on the way, are any learning points in this proposal something you would like your children to learn about from someone other than you and their mother? Would you find it appropriate for your children to learn about how two males or two females could have sex from another adult in a room filled with students? Mr. Dombrowski, as a father with kids in this district, and Mr. Kramer, a father and grandfather, you are the only two on this board who have reached out and discussed this with members of the community. I have no questions for you. Ms. Cavell, whom some may call a sexpert with a podcast called Six Minute Sex that provides sex education to children, I would ask if you would be okay with your children learning this in school environment, but that seems like a silly question to ask. What I will say is that your position on this is in the minority. And while I know you disagree, masturbation and self-pleasure are topics that should be left to parents to teach their kids. This is the position of the majority of this community. Ms. Klimkowitz, you are a therapist and grandmother. Are you comfortable with your grandchildren learning how to use a dental dam in front of their peers? Or from them to describe a range of ways to express affection within healthy relationships with details such as touching each other, sex, masturbation, and more? Shouldn't this be left to your children, their parents, to teach your grandchildren? Mr. Rosenbloom, you have no children in this district and no skin in this game except running for your seat in April. Your wife is a paraprofessional in D-54. Thankfully, Mr. DeRoz and that board finds these standards egregious enough to keep them with the curriculum that they have. Mr. Bradley, you have children who graduated from 211. Would you be comfortable with a teacher teaching your son how to speak to a girl about getting access to emergency birth control after he was with a girl at the tender age of 15 without your consent? Or would you and your wife rather have those discussions?
You have one minute remaining.
Dr. Small, you have no children, and it has been some time since you have been in the classroom. Have you ever taught sexual education in any form to children or adults? What are your qualifications to write this curriculum? What is your teaching staff's expertise on any of this, aside from basic biology? If this is adopted, the community deserves to know your training and expertise in this area and why you are putting forth the motion for the BOE to adopt these learning standards when the majority of districts in this state have chosen to opt out. I implore you all to consider how this will affect our children in the most negative way. The hundreds of children that will be opted out of this curriculum will cause disruption for the teachers in the classroom as well as further disruption to the learning environment of students. Teach them biology of sex. Teach them how to read, write, and be wonderful critical thinkers. Work on improving SAT scores and our district report cards. Leave the rest to the parents.
Jerry, Jerry Frida, followed by Brenda Newton. Jerry Frida, followed by Brenda Newton.
My name is Jerry. I've been a resident of the district for 40 years. Last month, when I spoke here, I was interrupted by boos and yelling by the religious and political extremists in attendance. Just 30 seconds into my comments when I suggested that a religious group's beliefs should not be imposed on the taxpayers of this district. It was an example of the chaos that they hoped to create in functioning of this district, from costly lawsuits to endless FOIA requests to even demanding resignations from board members for not returning a phone call. It's clear that these extremists are not actually trying to solve problems. They're invested in making problems worse and deepening the divisions that result from them in the community for their own political gain. So as you try to get back to normal after the biggest health crisis in a century, please don't let yourselves be distracted by those who seek to create chaos. As our state Superintendent of Education has said, through proficiency rates, though proficiency rates are still not at pre-pandemic levels, the growth shows us that we are absolutely on the right track. They also note that proficiency data show the percentage of students meeting or exceeding state standards show year-to-year progress toward meeting those standards. The consensus of opinion by educational professionals is that while students have not caught up academically to where they were prior to the pandemic, we need an all-hands-on-deck effort to support our schools and students as they work to overcome the effects of the pandemic. The majority of taxpayers in this district want a return to steady, rational progress that has been the hallmark of our schools. Clearly, the endless sniping by a vocal minority and their desire to continue the mayhem is detrimental to the required united effort to get back to normal. To the board members who have stood up to those who seek to create havoc, thank you. To those that have encouraged them, please put aside your political aspirations and try to remember what you're here for.
You have one minute remaining.
Thank you for your time.
All right, Brenda Newton, followed by Irene Peterson.
Hello. I'd like to open up with a scripture. "If anyone calls one of these little ones 'those who believe in me' to stumble, it will be better for them if a large milestone were hung around their neck and they were thrown into the sea." That is Jesus saying about how we treat our little ones. When you cause them to stumble, it's better for you to have a milestone and you drown. You really need to think about this curriculum that you're passing to school. My daughter is in District 15. She has an IEP, but Lord willing, that she'll be going to 11. So if I'm seeing grades fail, why are we pushing something that's not going to give them a higher education? So are we teaching kids how to be freaks before they can finance their own selves? Because I agree with the other father. Anyone who wants to pass this, are you a pedophile too? Or you want to love more on our children? Because why is that necessary when they're failing? You have children from other countries that's coming and taking jobs, which I'm not against because they deserve it because of their education. But our children here have not even the basics. Ain't nowhere in the world they should know how to do anal sex at, what, about 15, 10, 12? But you can't tell me what's 10 times 5. That is an issue. It should not be a struggle. So what are they wise at? What are they being smart at? Just being overly sexual? Getting ready for a pedophile? What are you doing? I don't really think y'all really thought this through, have you? Is somebody paying you under the table to do this? How can you sleep at night? Do you encourage your children to do this? Are y'all gonna sit up at night and tell the children how to do oral sex or you want to sit up there and watch a video with them too? I mean, I don't understand this. And granted, I know they're gonna see it on the internet. They are. But my main concern is, where is the education system? It's not even education anymore. It's just that you just teach them just how to be overly sexualized for adults. That's it. By the way, consider the words of the Lord because he's the only Lord. His name is Jesus.
Irene Peterson, followed by Ted Humphrey.
Good evening. My name is Irene Peterson. I'm a community member of D-211 for 20 years and have a student enrolled in Schaumburg High School. I'm here today to respectfully request that each of you vote to opt out of SB 818. The school board district is supposed to advocate for the community and to make the hard decisions that impact the majority of the children and families that it serves. I believe all of you, except for Mr. Dombrowski, have no children in this district. But please, listen and try to understand why so many families in this community are against this legislation. We have been criticized as alarmist, but I would like to say that we are parents that take an active role in making sure that our children grow to be successful contributors to society and are mentally capable to handle life's journey. Decisions should be made on the majority of the community needs and not to push for political or advocacy groups for their own agendas. Interestingly, the contributors and supporters of the NSES are aligned with organizations that have the financial ties to the outcomes of our youth behaviors. As I understand, the legislation provides the NSES to freely create whatever standards it chooses to meet its own agenda. And it would then require the ISBE to adopt and incorporate any future NSES changes. Political or advocacy groups should not be setting the public school standards, especially as they are not educators. This agenda only encourages the organization to meet its financial, social, and political positions rather than what is in the best interest of each of our students. Please do not use our kids as part of some social, political experiment or for revenue generation. The current sex acts classes are acceptable, but the proposed curriculum takes sexual wellness and sexual awareness too far. The proposed curriculum is no longer about learning of female or male reproduction, safe sex, or care for your body, but as it has turned out to be typically classified as pornography and encourages sexual acts at inappropriate age levels. We have been explicitly told that the school can better equip our children on sexual topics. But how? When our children are one of thousands in this district, you do not know our children. I, as a parent, knows what is best for my child on such topics, and it is a family matter. It is not a curriculum that is a one-size-fits-all. Yes, there may be some kids that are curious or have experimented with sexual preferences already, but that does not mean that they have the maturity to understand their decisions or consequences. Nor does this type of sexualization ever need to be pushed to every child as they are all at different and varying maturity levels. Let me remind you that the United Nations Convention defines a child as a human being below the age of 18, below the age of 18, and they are classified as such as they are unable to make serious decisions. Sexual acts, sexual preferences, over-sexuality are serious decisions with lifetime, mental, and social impacts. There is a reason a child under age 18 is not allowed to buy pornographic materials or cigarettes or even allowed to vote. It is not up to our public school system to address such sexual matters and force them upon our children. More than 548 districts, over 74% in Illinois, have already opted out. Why have we not? Why are we not taking the decrease in overall test scores and how we can improve? D-211 college readiness scores are 49%. Lane Tech is at 86. Stevenson is at 72. Prospects at 66. Why are we at 49%? What are we doing to make that better? Sexuality comes when it's natural to each person in their own time and not set by a timeline. Please, adopt out of SB 818.
Thank you. Ted Humphrey, followed by Kim Pinkerman. Ted Humphrey, followed by Kim Pinkerman. Okay, no Ted Humphrey?
Good evening. My name is Ted Humphrey. I've lived in Palatine for 27 years. I have three students, three children. Two of them have already moved all the way through and graduated from District 211. I have my youngest, who is a sophomore in a D-211 school. I'd like to use my three minutes and my constitutional right to free speech to do something a little radical, at least for me. It's going to put me out of my comfort zone for sure. But I don't really have confidence that, for most of you, that you'll listen to your constituents or to reason. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to invite three invisible, but don't worry, benevolent people into the room and talk to those guests on your behalf. AKA, I'm going to pray for you. So Heavenly Father, I thank you for the freedoms in this country and for the privilege of public education. Thank you for your extravagant love for all the people who are involved in this contentious situation. I know that you do love all the people involved here. Holy Spirit, I ask for your powerful presence right now. I invite you into this room right now. And Lord Jesus, I appeal the issue before us tonight to the highest court, the Court of Heaven. I ask you, Jesus, to gaze, that your gaze would be upon this meeting and the decision being made. We acknowledge, I acknowledge you, Jesus, as the King over all the kings. All authority is derived from you and is under you. This school board is be the Illinois General Assembly. All will answer to you, Jesus, someday. That is certain.
You have one minute remaining.
Jesus taught us to pray, "Father, your will be done on earth just as it is in heaven." I ask your will, Jesus, to be done regarding sexual education in D-211. I pray for these board members before me. I pray that you give them clarity. I pray that you would give them no peace and no rest until they each do the right thing regarding sex education in our district. I boldly ask you, Jesus, to remove from this board any and all who would mislead and promote falsehoods to our children and the students of this district. And finally, I ask you to shatter the lie that sexual activity is morally neutral or that one's gender can be different from their biological sex. Shine a bright light on the truth. I ask you to back this prayer with your power right now and in the days to come. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Kim Pinkerman, followed by Tracy Boland. Kim Pinkerman, followed by Tracy Boland.
All right, hello, everybody. My name is Kim Pinkerman. I have three kids from high school. Thank God for not much longer. Out of 860 school districts in Illinois, 548 have opted out of the NSES. That's 64%. Here are some of the high schools near us. Barrington, Lake Zurich, Libertyville, Vernon Hills, Lamont, Northfield, Oaklawn, and of course, we all know 15 and 54 are District 211 feeders. 24 have opted in. That is only 3% of the districts in Illinois have said yes to this horrible thing. As Public Act 102-0522 states, "A district may provide; it does not say it shall provide." It also states in the same act that you can opt out. The districts that have opted out of NSES are not opting out of sex ed. That's never been talked about. These boards have opted out of the very harmful NSES standards which law has allowed. There is also a second false statement in the curriculum report. Question two in Appendix A asks, "The national sex education standards were developed by the Future of Sex Initiative." What happens when they decide to change this in the future? The answer in the curriculum report state or reports states incorrectly. If an organization outside the state of Illinois makes modification to the current version of the standards, the State Board of Education would have to follow existing procedures and processes to engage the legislature to approve and adopt new standards. This means as the national sex education standards are updated, the State Board of Education shall update these standards also. This says "shall," not "may." That means you are agreeing to standards that you have no idea where they're going. State legislature already cleared or clearly addressed this in the verbiage of the law. Why is this administration stating the opposite in the curriculum report? Are you guys trying to deceive some people here?
Yeah, one minute remaining.
I also wanted to point out that the NSES were written by the help of many organizations, but one that really stands out is the Sex Ed for Social Change. This group was funded by Hugh Hefner. My husband and I both went to Fremont High School. We stayed in the area to raise our children because, here because of the good school district. Because of the actions past and present of Lisa Small, this board, and now I'm going to include Mark Langer, I have no faith in you to do the right thing and not pass this curriculum. So I end with this. You can push whatever kind of crap you want through this NSES curriculum. You can do it. But put a smiley face on it so that you can all go home and you can sleep well tonight. When a large percent of the population is subjected to an evil agenda to appease the few, it ends up in destruction, divide, hate, and ultimately, we will defeat you. All of us in this community who are against this curriculum, we will never stop fighting. We will never stop protecting our children. And we will not stop until all of you who vote yes for this curriculum are off. This is not racism, red, blue. We are going, or what you are subjecting our kids to is wrong. Vote no.
Tracy Boland, followed by Maria Nelson.
Good evening, board and President Klimkoitz. My name is Tracy Boland, and I live in Palatine. Tonight, I would like to congratulate Fremd High School graduate Nabilah Syed. On Tuesday, she was elected to the Illinois House of Representatives. She is the first Muslim woman and the first Indian-American to be elected to the Illinois House. She is 23 years old. She had students from Fremd and Palatine working together on her campaign to get elected. Clearly, District 211 is doing a lot of things correctly to create an educational environment where students thrive, achieve, and are prepared to succeed in this, the 21st century. Thank you, board, for your hard work and your dedication to our young people. I am so proud to live in this district.
Thank you. Maria Nelson, followed by Renee Tru.
Good evening. I'll try to keep it really short because I know it's a long evening for everyone. I just, I think, you know, there's so many cultures here in the U.S. This is what I've noticed. And everyone comes from a different background, and everyone has a different worldview. I'm sure everyone's noticed that as well. So I think the easiest way for everyone to be happy would be to opt out just because it would just take care of all the different genders, all the different identities, all these different issues that are coming up, I think, so that everyone can make their own decisions. I think that would just be easier for everyone, you know? It would be less offensive, I think, for people that have been raised in different worldviews. I lived in India for a bit, and that would be very offensive if that was taught in India. I lived in Brazil, very offensive there as well. I lived in Chile, Peru, you know? And we've got people here in Chicago from all over the world. So why teach something that would be offensive, right? Aren't we trying to unite all the different countries versus get them all against each other? Because I think that's what it'll cause. So it just seems easier to just opt out. I don't know if that makes, I just think it's a wiser choice. And that way, parents can decide, and they can choose from whatever worldview they have. And then everyone's happy. So those who do agree with it can teach it, right? The parent can teach it to their child, and those who don't, don't need to. So I don't know why it's so complicated. That's really what I'm just, but anyway, it's short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Tru, followed by Katrizina Dirda.
Hello, Renee Tru. I do have children in 211 and 15.
You can lift up the microphone a little bit, maybe.
Of course, thank you.
There we go. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address the board. First, congratulations on a successful referendum. I know it wasn't your referendum, but it does show that the actual majority of people in this district care about public education, which is important. There is a separation of church and state, so kind of toss anything about religion in this conversation. Secondly, a declaration that I, a parent of multiple students in this district, wish for the SB 818 Sexual Health Education Curriculum to continue to be available. And a reminder that any parent who would rather handle that education themselves has always and will continue to have the right to opt their child out. Only their child, not all children. Third, a request that this curriculum be available to adult students. There seem to be a few that are unclear on some of the terms, and maybe we can all learn some new things, like what a persecution fetish is. Fourth, a reminder that any person who seeks to interfere or influence an election while acting as an emissary of a tax-exempt organization can be reported to the IRS using Form 13909. That's 13909. Thank you for your time and your dedication to the general welfare of the student experience.
Thank you. Katrizina Dirda, followed by Chandra Verano Verdenia. Is there a Katrizina Dirda? Okay, if there is none, then Chandra Verano Verdenia? Okay.
Mark Bissalano.
Okay, thank you.
Since the last board meeting, I've spent a lot of time discussing SB 818 Sex Education Curriculum with people in their 20s, 50s, 60s, 80s, friends and family, gay and straight, some District 211 alum like myself. Whether they attended sex ed classes in the 70s, 80s, or 2000s, the feedback has been the same. The instruction they received was inadequate to prepare them for life at school and in the real world. The main complaint, regardless of generation or gender, was that the sex education curriculum did not and has not kept up with the times. That deficit is even more pronounced when it comes to the LGBTQ+ specific topics like gender identity and sexual preference. Studies and articles published by the Human Rights Campaign, Planned Parenthood, GLSEN, National Institutes of Health, GLAD, and multiple universities have found that sex education often minimizes or entirely excludes material related and important to LGBTQ+ students, thereby leaving them uninformed and vulnerable to sex abuse, bullying, and STIs. In August 2021, Health and Wellness piece in USA Today stated, quote, "When we provide kids with really inclusive, comprehensive sex education, they grow up to have more bodily autonomy, more healthy perspectives on sexuality, they tend to delay and make more responsible decisions, and be far more relational and communicative in their relationships." Without LGBTQ+ inclusive sex education, queer and trans youth are left in the dark when it comes to making informed decisions about their health. Authors of an October 4, 2021 article published by the National Association of School Nurses found, quote, "That inclusive sex education led to a school environment that becomes more tolerant with teachers and students more confident in intervening when witnessing homophobic abuse. Consequently, the student, the school climate changes as teachers did not merely discuss heterosexual sex, pregnancy prevention, and marriage. But a vocal minority is trying to remove access for all other parents and students to the rigorous learning experiences, opportunities for involvement, and strong supportive systems as called out in the District 211 mission statement. SB 818 contains a no-fault, no-retribution, opt-out clause. Parents and guardians are free to choose ignorance for their own children. They should not be allowed to choose, or force that on the entire district. For them, it's not about protecting children, it's about attacking and exploiting the underrepresented and vulnerable in service of a vicious PR campaign. We know this because Pastor Pittman and his followers at the New Hope Community Church were not moved to leave the Southern Baptist Convention because of the nearly 400 claims of sexual misconduct, rape, and child molestation over 20 years. Oh, no. They were only motivated to leave when the president of the SBC at the time asked affiliate churches to apologize for their abusive treatment of the LGBT+ community. I urge you to embrace the District 211 mission and vote to approve SB 0818. The students deserve better. We all deserve better." Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph Bonatz, followed by Michael Madea.
Okay, okay, is that good? Hello, my name is Ralph Bonatz, a father of two and 23-year D-211 resident living in Schaumburg. Both of my kids graduated from Schaumburg High. I urge you to opt out of the national sex education standards, just as a large majority of other Illinois school districts have done to date. Please recognize that the content and curriculum associated with these standards do not represent the values, morals, and educational priorities of me, my neighbors, or the D-211 community at large. These standards deliberately pollute the minds of minors by normalizing unnatural perverse and risky behaviors. Furthermore, the standards support assertions that defy nature, science, genetics, and basic biology, requiring a greater leap of faith to believe than most religious or cult doctrines. Even the title slapped on these standards is misleading, as they are not national, were not written by government officials, and are not federal law. Rather, they were created by extremely biased organizations. Many NSES topics are clearly outside the ambit of a reasonable high school curriculum. I don't want my tax dollars being spent on expanding sex education curriculum to address things like masturbation, transgender ideology, sexual orientations, contraception access, and anal and oral sex. I do want my tax dollars spent on improving the offerings, resources, programs, and quality associated with subjects like science, math, English, communication skills, civics, social studies, music, consumer education, language, and vocational studies. Equip our kids with the knowledge and skills they need to hold down a job, earn a living, and work toward a fulfilling career.
Yeah, one minute remaining.
Help them discover their talents. Leave these other topics to their parents to handle. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Madea. Then followed by Maya Benning Codina. Is Michael Madea, M-A-D-I-A?
Good evening, board.
If you can move the microphone closer to you, please.
Good evening, board. My name is Michael Madea. I had three children go through 211, and I've never had any problems. Everything went, all those years, it was fine.
Yes, please speak up.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay. I just have a few points to make, four to be precise. When I saw this bill, what was in this bill, I was disgusted as to what this bill will do to our children. And then point number two, the basics of birds and the bees for children is fine. This bill is way overboard. This bill should have been a referendum and let the parents decide what is best for their children. I'll bet that it would fail if it would go before parents' scrutiny. In closing, all I have to say is please vote no on this sick, sick proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Maya Benning Codina, followed by James Pittman.
Firstly, I just want to say thank you to all of the veterans in the room. Thank you for your service. My name is Maya Benning Codina, and I'm a master's level licensed clinical professional counselor, certified rehabilitation counselor, and certified sex addiction therapist candidate in the state of Illinois. I'm here to ask you all to opt out of the SB 818. Public schools are not a place where children should be exposed to radical sexual ideology as it infringes upon our parental constitutional rights. Teachers should not be required to teach sex education. Experts in the field should start with first relationship building and personal health and safety classes, not what the NSES promotes. Studies show that adolescents who engage in sexual behavior are more likely to have depression, anxiety, suicidal ideation, and future relational challenges, including dating violence. The teenage brain is impulsive, it's spontaneous, it's impressionable, and the narratives that you push upon them can impact for the rest of their lives. The prefrontal cortex, which is responsible for judgment, higher-level thinking, complex problem-solving, and decision-making, is not even fully developed until we are in our late 20s. That means that adolescents are not even able to make informed and sound decisions regarding these things. In a group practice where I work treating sex addiction, 18 of the clients had early exposure to inappropriate sexual content between ages 5 to 12, which is also known as child sexual abuse. Of these 18 individuals, they all identify as sex addicts in their adult lives. Books like Trick by Ellen Hopkins, which are in District 211 libraries, contain adult erotica and inappropriate sexual content which should never be available to children. When children are exposed to sexual content prematurely, also known as child sexual abuse, it creates long-term preoccupation with sex, it can increase the earlier onset of age-at-first voluntary intercourse, and result in a greater likelihood of teenage pregnancy. Those in favor of the NSES argue that abstinence education doesn't work. However, it could be argued that sexual education doesn't work. Research I reviewed by the Institute for Research and Evaluation from 2020 looked at 60 different comprehensive sex education programs nationwide.
Yeah, one minute remaining.
And they found that it did not increase condom or contraception use. It did not have sustained reduction in teen pregnancy. It did not prevent STDs, and it did not delay the age-at-first voluntary intercourse. Encouraging abstinence education and saying no is more important than teaching about anal sex. And we certainly don't, as parents, want our teachers demonstrating or explaining any of these topics. I ask you to vote against these sexual education standards and instead focus on educating the youth across core subjects and providing opportunities for life skills such as financial literacy, stress management, community involvement, and how to manage failure. Those are the situations that our students will face in their lifetime. Children who are exposed to sexual themes too early end up using sex, porn, and masturbation as a way of coping with life's hard challenges. Instead of encouraging and enforcing that, teach them how to cope and deal with life's challenges. To do this requires courageous parents, lawmakers, and school boards, and that's why I urge you to opt out. you to opt out.
Thank you. James Pittman, followed by Greg Morin. James Pittman, followed by Greg Morin.
My name is James Pittman, and I'm a resident of 211, and also I'm the pastor of New Hope Community Church. The appendix in the supplementary curriculum actually quoted our flyer. Here's what it says, "There is a flyer circulating around the district community that states that District 211 will teach children how to define oral and anal sex, how to masturbate, how the potential role of hormone blockers. Is this true? The national sex ed standards slash Illinois sex standards, education standards, or divided into standards for different grades? Since our curriculum is delivered through freshman and sophomore wellness courses, we have analyzed and proposed to follow the standards for grades nine and 10. The concepts mentioned above are not present in the verbiage in the standards for grades nine and 10, therefore would not be part of the curriculum." Quote. So the administration says that they're not going to discuss topics that are supposed to be taught up through kindergarten through eighth grade in the standard in the NES. Let me give an example of what that is. That's like an algebra teacher on the first grader class who says, "I'm going to teach you algebra, but we're not going to use division and multiplication. I'm going to teach you algebra, we're not going to deal with addition and subtraction." Of course you're going to deal with it, especially if it's algebra and you need all those things to teach it. So if that was true, that the verbiage is in here in grades nine and 10, that would be incredibly deceptive. Of course you're going to use it. Question is, is it true? It is not true. Oral and anal sex appears specifically in the ninth and 10th grade standards. On page 32 from the NSES, it says, quote, "Identify factors that impact the risk of unintended pregnancies and potential transmission of STDs, including HIV from a variety of sexual behaviors, including vaginal, oral, and anal sex." It is in there. Also, that was on page 32. On page 31, it actually says, talks about the steps of barriers, and if you remember what they said earlier, barriers are used in oral sex when it goes to vaginal and anal. It's disgusting. So when they made the appendix, question is, were they deceiving? Or were they ignorant of what the SES, NSES actually taught in ninth and 10th grade? Look, to me, it's simple. The next time the world sees Jesus Christ, he will not be the suffering servant.
Your speaking time has ended.
He will be the conqueror king.
Thank you, Pastor. Greg Morin, followed by Terry Paulson.
I would like to use my time to respond to the letter the board received from the ACLU about NSES. In their letter, here are some of the things they claim about us who oppose the NSES. One, those people speaking out on NSES are in a minority as nine out of 10 adults believe in sexual health education. Where'd they get this figure from? What study? Which District 211 parents and students did they survey? Since when is learning about how to perform oral and anal sex considered health education? One of the D-211 board members posted on Facebook that emails are coming in 20 to one against NSES. We are not the minority. Two, teenage students who receive sexual health education in high school are at a lower risk of experiencing harmful and abusive relationships or adverse health outcomes. What specific study are they citing? Who did they survey? If they had references for these outlandish claims, they would include them in their letter. Lawyers are well-schooled at the use of citations. Three, the board should not permit the volume of voices to be confused with the needs of a wide swath of students. How wide a swath of 14- to 17-year-olds need to be coached by teachers on how to get pleasure from oral, anal, group, lesbian, or gay sex? Four, this minority can't deny access to information about sexual health for other students. First of all, we're not the minority. Why is it when people stand in opposition against graphic pornographic sex, they're accused of bigotry and hatred of LGBT kids? Do these kids have a special need to have their innocence destroyed? We believe all kids should be protected from this. Tonight, you all vote, and if you're inclined to approve the NSES, you won't mind me quoting a passage from a book that NSES is going to allow to be taught. It's called Jack of Hearts by Elsie Rosen. I'll clean up some of the language. The guy from St. Jude's was going down on the other one, Zach from Riverton Prep. Jack, how does he get that dick and ass for G? Is his life like a porno? Is it like that for all gay guys? Like when Jack got effed in the ass by the coach from Hybrook at halftime of the homecoming game? Home wasn't the only thing coming. We are against this. Everyone who is against this have kids who attend or attended schools, and we pay the taxes to pay your salary, including the $246,000 a year paid to Superintendent Small. You have an opinion retirement and guaranteed contract, so you face no consequences. The rest of you on the board do, however, and will remember your vote. They say democracy dies in the darkness, but also know that evil is exposed in the light. We may not win this vote tonight, but we have exposed the pure evil of NSES whose sole purpose is to indoctrinate and groom our children under the guise of health education. We have exposed all of you on this board who will vote in favor of evil.
Thank you.
My name is Terry Paulson, and my comments to the board tonight are not directed at Mr. Kramer and Mr. Dombrowski. We have a problem in this district, and the problem is you. We are your constituents, you are our representatives, but you never represent us. I'm not even sure that you, that you're aware that you have constituents. You consistently rubber stamp anything and everything the administration wants, including the sexualization of kids. Why is this? Well, a lot of it goes back to your elections. Let me spell it out. School employee unions got together and chose you to run for school board. They used piles of union money and armies of union workers to run and finance your campaigns. School employees turned out in droves to vote for you, and in the end, you won. So now, we have school employee unions sitting on one side of the table, and you, the people those unions helped to elect, sitting on the other. And that leaves us, the people who actually live here, without any real representation. That is a shameful conflict of interest. And that is why it used to be illegal for government employees to unionize. Unfortunately, we know that you, that tonight, you will most likely ignore the opinions, values, and significant efforts many of your constituents made to convince you to opt out of this perverse curriculum. And instead, you will rubber stamp the recommendations of this administration, just like you always do. Just like some of you did when you voted to put naked boys in the girls' locker room six years ago, over the objections of hundreds of your constituents. That took a special kind of arrogance. If you do ignore us again, the only thing left to us is to vote you out, each and every one of you who votes for this wretched curriculum. We will replace you with people who will actually represent us and repeal that vote. You could take a lot of wind out of our sails tonight by choosing to protect kids instead of hurting them. The choice is yours. And now I'd like to speak to my neighbors. Next spring, there will be four board seats, four board seats open for election. We could flip this board. Heck, if we do that, we could even flip this administration. So if that's something you would like to see happen, please share your email with us on one of these cards. As soon as comments are over, we will be outside the door taking, taking your emails. We can do this. Oh, and we also, we'll also do it after the vote, outside the door. These are our schools. Let's take 'em back.
All right. Vicki Wilson, followed by Stacy Gale.
I would like to address the supplementary curriculum report, which was given to you as a basis for your vote tonight, which is vague, inaccurate, and definitely incomplete. On page two, it states, "ISB did adopt standards in July, ultimately choosing to adopt the national sex ed standards." Choosing? There was no choosing for ISB. The legislation clearly states the NSES, as authored by the Future of Sex Education Initiative, must be used if districts opt in. You, however, as a board, you do definitely have a choice to make tonight, as allowed in the legislation. In that same paragraph, it states, "Districts who teach sex ed." Well, that's not accurate either. It's districts who choose to teach CSE, Comprehensive Sex Ed, two different things. You can still teach the basics, productive, healthy, necessary information, like many other districts are, who have already opted out. Now for the vagueness of this report. Why is it so vague when the NSES is so very detailed? Huge disconnect by design, most likely. The political activists who wrote the NSES were very meticulous regarding what they want kids to learn. Anyone who glanced at the 74-page document can see this. Including these four standards here on my board for ninth and 10th graders that were nowhere in the report. So does that mean they're already being taught? You're already teaching about anal sex and sex toys? You're already demonstrating how to use dental dams? How on earth could anyone in their right mind think it's appropriate to talk about that with other people's children in school, with their peers? The writers of the NSES are not in their right mind. Are you already teaching about where girls can get an abortion locally? Because that's in there. Is D-211 already teaching pleasure-based comprehensive sex ed pushed by Planned Parenthood and the authors of NSES who believe kids are sexual from birth and should never be told to put off sexual activity? We ask you to request answers about this incomplete report during your open discussion time before you vote. We look forward to your discussion. We do not want to be part of the less than 3% of the districts who have opted into this. Join the majority who said, "No, thanks. Students deserve way better than this one-sided pornographic trash." The 64% majority of districts didn't tell parents, "Well, you can just opt your own kid out." They saw what was obvious. This should not be the default for any child, and the schools have zero business talking to kids about things that should be between parent and child. So again, we look forward to hearing what each and every one of you have to say about this before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Gale.
My name is Stacy Gale. I'm a resident of D-211. I tried emailing the board today with my concern, but it was blocked by the district. Why is the district blocking emails sent to the board? Why didn't the administration move this meeting to a larger venue? It seems as though the administration is making every effort to silence parents with views in opposition to the administration. I'm willing to bet none of the emails in support of recommendation were blocked. Unbelievable. I can't believe the lengths the administration will go to to try to make it appear as though opposition is the minority. I plan to speak about the lack of truth and transparency of the administration, but since my email regarding the proposed changes was blocked, I will be addressed the proposed changes to the wellness curriculum. I request the board vote no to the proposed changes to the freshman and sophomore wellness curriculum. The proposed changes do not provide any details on what will be taught or what materials will be used to teach the standards. As part of their FAQs, the administration states the curriculum will not include information on how to masturbate, how to define oral and anal sex, and the role of hormone blockers, because those are not included in the ninth and 10th grade standards. There is nothing in the proposed critical learning standards that mandates teachers adhere to the ninth and 10th grade standards only. The critical learning standards are so vague, a teacher could teach just about anything using whatever materials he or she wanted. I'm sure if parents asked if the sophomore English class would require students to view a video depicting a black man executing someone at Point Blank, and then executing a church choir with an automatic weapon, and finishing with the same black man smoking marijuana while repeating the phrase, "Black man, get your money," the answer would be no. Or as part of the same assignment, students would be required to watch a rap video of two men saying, "I don't contemplate, I meditate," then off your fucking head. Readiness?
Yeah, one minute remaining.
I just kill shit because it's in my DNA. I got dark, I got evil, that rot inside my DNA. You motherfuckers can't tell me nothing. I'd rather die than listen to you. Sex, money, murder, our DNA. I'm sure the public would expect the administration would say these materials would not be used to teach sophomore English. However, these videos were used for sophomore English, and if I remember correctly, Mr. Schumacher determined the videos were in compliance with the district policies. So I'm asking the board to vote no to the proposed changes. There is not enough detail to protect students from inappropriate content. Thank you.
Thank you. That's going to take us to our consent agenda items, and it's going to be broken down into...
Dr. Small, excuse me. Board President, may I ask for a brief five-minute recess to use the bathroom, please?
Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. We're back in order, and the consent agenda items, there'll be three separate motions. The first one is, the recommended action is that the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 2022 and letter C, the resolutions authorization intervention in proceedings before the State Property Tax Board, be removed from, also removed from that agenda, and the rest be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion, then. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Which ones are we voting on?
We're voting on everything other than the minutes of the October 20, 2022 meeting, because we had a board member missing, and also letter C, the Tax Appeal Board. We're voting on everything else except for those two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Okay. The second recommended action is that the minutes of the regular meeting of October 20, 2022 be approved as presented. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on those? All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Then that takes us to our third motion. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the resolutions authorizing intervention in proceedings before the State Property Tax Appeal Board, which seek assessed valuation reductions in excess of $100,000 for property tax year 2021. Docket numbers 21-27725, 21-22816, 21-22444, and 21-20919. And further authorize Hodges, Lozzi, Eisenheimer, Rodrick, and Cohen, and Franzick as the Board's education's legal representatives to file requests to intervene in appeal proceeding forms with the Property Tax Appeal Board on the properties for which the district receives notification of appeal. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President, for removing this from the consent agenda. I'd like to point attention to docket 21-22816. This is a petition for properties within the Barrington Road Condo Association. These property improvements are assessed with a range from $24,000 to $212,387. These are affordable housing units within our district, and we are voting to use their tax dollars against their efforts for a fair assessment. Later tonight, we will vote to increase property taxes by $9.21 million annually to support our community. We need to consider the affordable housing in our community, and this board should oppose this action.
Thank you.
Yes. The appeals we're voting on intervening in tonight are for, include property belonging to Target, which made $183 million in profits in the second quarter of 2022, property belonging to Bridgestone Corporation, which made over $7.5 billion in profits for the quarter ending March of this past year, 2022, and a shopping plaza. If we don't intervene in these appeals and instead levy whatever refunds are issued on the basis of those proceedings, everyday homeowners make up the difference. Asking seniors on a fixed income or people in affordable housing to cover the cost of Target's property tax break is indefensible.
Thank you.
Question. Do we know what the attorney's fees will be for the interventions?
Individually, no. The attorney's fees, though, as a total, are documented currently on the board. Lauren, do you, we don't have the individual in front of us.
No, they would vary by individual case, but there is a summary that provides the attorney fees for the summary of all PTAB cases that the board has intervened in. The other thing that I would share is that we are part of a consortium that shares the costs of the interventions.
What did we pay last year to the attorneys to do this?
I would have to get that amount specifically.
I couldn't pull it out of the...
There's a summary that is a combined of multiple years, but I would have to pull out last year's totals.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
No.
Mr. Dombrowski.
No.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. All right. That takes us to our special reports, Freedom of Information Act. That's an information item. The next is the school report cards. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education direct the superintendent to post access to the 2022 school report cards to the district and school websites no later than November 30, 2022. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Dr. Small?
School report cards were developed by the state of Illinois to provide information about academic performance, characteristics of students, faculty, instructional resources, and finances at both the school, district, and state level. At the high school level, summative designations are determined based on a school's composite data on key indicators, as well as data for individual demographic subgroups. The specific categories used to determine the summative ratings are English language arts proficiency, which is our junior year SAT scores, math proficiency from junior year math SAT scores, science participation on the Illinois Science Assessment, English language learner progress through the access tests given at every grade, graduation rate of our current seniors, ninth-grade students' on-track graduation, chronic absenteeism, and climate survey. There are four possible summative ratings: exemplary, commendable, targeted support, and comprehensive support. Only 10% of the high schools in the state can achieve an exemplary rating. This year, Hoffman Estates High School has moved into the exemplary rating category for the first time, joining Schaumburg, Fredman, Conant High Schools. Palatine High School remains a consistent commendable rating. All of our schools continue to use this data as a source for improvement. Three months ago, the schools presented their progress on the District 211 academic goals, including the areas of focus for this year. These goals remain in alignment with the school report card and are part of our continual interventions and review. Though the report cards are online and accessible, tonight's action is to post those direct links to each school's report card on the district website.
Question. Are test scores up or down over the last two years?
Which test scores are you referencing?
I think they're based on, what, SAT? Are they up or down over the last two years?
I would have to look exactly. I don't know that they're up.
Given, given, we do get the information, and, you know, Mr. Kramer, you could have asked that question ahead of time.
What I did, I saved it for the board meeting. Thank you very much, Madam President.
And we have, the scores have gone down because of the way between the Zoom meetings and the hybrid and things of that nature, and that's gone down, you know, throughout the country, unfortunately.
I would think...
So hopefully, we're on the way moving up.
I would think that the administration would have that at their fingertips.
The, the school report card shows improvement. Any other questions or comments? All right. If there are none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. All right. Then that takes us, information item is on placement testing of incoming freshmen.
If there's anything you'd like to share, Dr. Small?
We're pleased to begin the welcoming of the class of 2027 to our schools. The transition process begins early because course selection is completed in the winter, so the staffing can be determined prior to the beginning of the hiring season for licensed educators, as well as building a master schedule for each school for the 2027 students across the eight time slots. The incoming freshman testing is just one piece of data used for placement. Members of our Student Services team meet with junior highs to review additional successes in terms of assisting our students with a proper placement.
Any questions in regards to the incoming freshman testing?
Yes, I do. Of the 156 students who didn't participate, and, you know, it says here in the report, 55 were on IEPs, and that schools are going to follow up individually. Will the board be updated when all of those tests have been carried out, when those students have been locked into a test? Or what happens if, despite our best efforts, we can't find a student for the placement test?
Then we go with the conversation that our Student Services personnel have when they go out to the junior highs.
Will we get updated when, as that, as that process unfolds?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. There's an information item on the Illinois High School Association, letter of appreciation.
Yes. Thank you to all of our schools who made it possible for the state tournament to occur for our girls' tennis finals. And then we also had our state series for soccer was completed at Hoffman Estates High School last weekend, so thank you to all the employees who worked together to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Then that takes us to the unfinished business, the 2022 proposed tax levy and truth in taxation resolution. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the attached resolution, which sets forth the amount of $251,225,000 as the proposed 2022 levy for Township High School District 211, and directs publication of a notice of public hearing on the proposed levy at its meeting to be held on December 15, 2022. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Small?
Tonight, the board will take action to approve a resolution sending the tentative 2022 levy amount and publish notice of a public hearing that will be held on December 15 at that Board of Education meeting. The recommended 2022 levy amount that was presented at the October 20 Board of Education meeting will preserve the long-term financial stability of the district while also maintaining our strong position of financial efficiency. The recommended levy amount that will allow the board to fulfill their strategic plan, including the ability to remain debt-free while also maintaining a minimum targeted fund balance and providing the capacity to sustain the quality of our comprehensive programs, includes the recommended increase of 3.5% plus 0.3% of the new property growth compared to the maximum property tax extension levy amount, or PTAL, which is 5% plus 0.3 of the new property growth.
Any comments or questions?
I have a comment. Note, this levy is asking for $9.21 million more than the prior year. After annual budget surpluses of $15 million last year, $17.8 million in the 2021 budget, and $4 million in the 2019-2020 budget, we must not confuse the issue by suggesting this is impacted by the land sale. These numbers are based on surpluses in revenue and expenditures. Land sale money is a one-year revenue item moved to fund balances. Why does D-211 need to bleed another $9.21 million from the community? What is D-211 planning that requires another $9.21 million annually? Some are looking at me and thinking, "Hey, shut up and be happy. They didn't ask for $12.8 million, which is allowed by law." This administration is asking for $9.21 million more per year, and they are suggesting the fund balance is going to diminish. I don't see how that's possible. D-211 should levy 1.5% annually until the excessive annual surplus diminishes to 3% of budget, and as a Board of Education with a fiduciary responsibility to this community, developing that strategic direction is our responsibility.
Any other comments? Questions?
Yeah, I, just, 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 just a brief comment from my brief tenure here on the board. I'm going on here four years. The, the administration has always requested the maximum allowable by PTAL. The fund balances have gone up since I've been here. I don't expect them to go down. I expect them to go up with this levy.
And we've got our document in front of us, also looking at the levy going over the next number of years, where our fund balance will decrease back to the about 39%.
Madam President, that's a projection. That's not fact.
Everything is a projection. We're not sure what's going to happen.
That's exactly right.
So that's why we're looking at the funds that we have. We have, we do not have working cash bonds, so it's paying for our capital improvements and things that need to maintain our schools.
Well, the trend is there.
Okay.
The trend, the trend is there. We raise the taxes, the fund balance goes up.
And you've got the documentation in front of you, and we've talked about capital improvements over the years. Any other questions?
Yep. Capital improvement projects were laid out in their specificity at last month's board meeting. That's still publicly available. Anybody can look that up about the projects over the next five years. And this year, we're running a deficit budget. That's kind of the point. So that, that's how you spend down the reserves. It takes time. We're starting that this year.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. If not, roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
No.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
No.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Okay. That will take us to, that will take us to some revisions of policy. The first one is, the recommended action is that the board policy file DJC bidding requirements be modified as proposed and added as an active board policy on board docs. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. The next item, recommended action, is that the board policy file DID inventories be modified as proposed and added as an active board policy on board docs. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. The next recommended action is that the board policy file EHA identity protection be modified as proposed and added as an active board policy on board docs. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. The next item is, the recommended action is that the board policy file JO student records be modified as proposed and added as an active board policy on board docs. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. That takes us to the Illinois Association of School Board Resolutions 2022, and that's open for discussion. Mr. Rosenbloom?
Madam President, excuse me. Can I ask what the motion was?
I, I'm sorry.
What, what's the motion associated that we're, we're opening for discussion?
There is, it's, it's, it's an information item, consent.
I'm sorry. Could you please clarify? Per Roberts, per Roberts Rules of Order Section 4, Paragraph 8, we should have a motion prior to discussion?
There is, there is no, there is no motion up for vote and action.
Then I don't think this board should be spending time with discussion without motion. If we are to follow Roberts Rules of Order.
Roberts Rules of Order does allow discussion on topics, and this is considered a topic. So we are able to discuss it.
Sorry, this is under the business portion of the agenda, Madam President?
Yes. And we, we talked about this last month, asking board members to be prepared to speak in regards to this, to give us consensus of how to vote at the delegates' assembly.
I'm just following the rules that we all agree.
All right. Would you like a, a motion presented?
I believe we need a motion.
All right. Then the motion would be, recommend that the... All right, then, the motion would be, recommend that the Board of Education then discuss the resolution and provide direction for the delegate to speak on behalf of the board at the delegates' assembly for the Illinois Association of School Boards.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Earlier, eight new resolutions were shared with you, along with information that at this board meeting, I would welcome discussion on and ask for your consensus for the delegate to represent our Board of Education and vote for or against each during the delegate assembly next week. Are there any new resolutions from the information you've received that a board member would like to discuss this evening? Hearing none. I will point out that each of the eight resolutions, one at a time, and ask each board member how they would like the delegate representing this Board of Education and community to vote on, on our behalf. If at any time Mrs. Klimkowitz would like to add comments as our division's resolutions chair and our district's delegate at the upcoming delegate assembly, I would welcome that. So, I'm going to go through the eight resolutions and ask each board member to let me know what their, their request is for the delegate to vote. I believe we already have one board member who has submitted his, his.
Mr. Dombrowski has given us.
His vote, his, his consensus, his census on each item, and I appreciate that. So, the first resolution is regarding fund balances and the Miller Ratio Adjustment that the ISB would request that the Illinois Legislature, Legislature continue legislation barring claims for excessive accumulations when a school boards, school districts' Miller Ratio of amounts available to average annual expenditures is less than 3.0. So, I'd like to ask each board member whether they are in, in favor or not the Resolutions Committee recommends to adopt. Mr. McGowan?
No, no.
Mrs. Cavell?
Yes.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Yes.
I say yes. Mr. Kramer?
Present.
And Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. The second resolution is the alternative fueled, fueled school bus funding. The Illinois Association of School Boards is seeking to urge the state and federal governments to provide funding to school districts for transitioning to zero emission school buses or low emission school buses when a district can demonstrate that zero emission buses are not practical, and for green charging infrastructure in order to reduce schoolchildren's exposure to harmful pollutants from diesel emissions. The Resolution Committee recommends do not adopt. So, if I can ask each board member for their vote for or against this resolution. Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mrs. Cavell?
Yes.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Kramer?
No.
And Mr. Bradley?
I'm going to say no.
Okay. The third resol, the the third resolution is firearm dealer location. The resolution is that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support and advocate to expand and amend legislation of the existing Public Safety Firearms Dealer License Certification Act to increase the distance a gun store or any retail facility selling firearms and/or ammunition may be located in relation to a school, preschool, or daycare facility from 500 feet to 1,500 feet. The Resolution Committee recommends do not adopt.
Let me speak on this one very briefly. A lot of the schools that are southern areas are smaller towns, and if they have some of these gun stores, they're going to be within the area less than the 1,500 feet. And that was one of the reasons why the Resolutions Committee said, you know, recommend do not adopt because these, some of these towns are not going to be able to handle that and move those that much further out of the area.
So, I have something to add to that, and that is that I, I represent this school district and this community and need to take that into consideration with regards to how I vote on this resolution, how I feel in relation to this consensus on this resolution. So, I'll be casting my, my census that way. So, Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cavell?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
And I vote, no. I'm sorry, I vote yes to increase the distance. The next, the next is to amend an existing position, and that is capital grant fund for school buildings. It's a position statement, capital funding for school construction and the school construction grant program. This is associated with allocate, with the ISB shall actively work with the General Assembly and the Board of Education to increase capital funding for public school infrastructure improvements and development, allocating school construction grant funds every year, providing a capital grant fund to address shortage of classroom space due to population growth and repair and maintenance needs of aging buildings. It is also associated to school construction grant program related to grant entitlements, grant awards, local school district authority to select architects, engineers, contractors, and laborers. Mrs. Klimkowitz, do you have anything to add to this one?
No.
Okay. The Resolution Committee recommends to adopt this grant funding position statement. Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cavell?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
And Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The next is school safety fund position statement regarding school safety grant program. The Illinois Association of School Boards, this is the, the position statement, shall advocate for the creation and funding of a school safety grant program at the federal and state level that would assist school districts to support all costs of a comprehensive school security enhancements, including but not limited to cameras, technology, infrastructure, security personnel, staff training, and maintenance. The Resolution Committee recommends to adopt. Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cavell?
Yes.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
And Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
The next is involvement with candidates for public school office. Position statement 3.02, candidate support. This is a resolution, this is a recommendation that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall actively encourage and assist school board members to effectively evaluate legislative positions relative to public education as they affect the principles of school management to ensure the best education for public schools and students in Illinois. The committee recommends do not adopt.
The committee felt that the current legis, the current resolution as it is does cover the legislative position and felt that that was appropriate, that, you know, changing some of that language would not, was, was not going to be effective.
Okay. Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mrs. Cavell?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Bradley?
No.
And I also vote no. The next is mandates review committee. Periodic review of state and federal mandates. Illinois Association of School Boards shall support legislation for the creation of a committee on mandate review. The Resolution Committee recommends to adopt. Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mrs. Cavell?
Yes.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
And I vote no. And the last one is financial contributions for school board elections. The Illinois, this is the, the proposal that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall continue to support the nonpartisan election of school board members at a nonpartisan election. ISB strongly believes that school board candidates should not solicit, accept, or receive either a donation or financial contribution from special interest groups, political action committees, or political parties. The Resolution Committee recommends, the Resolution Committee recommends to adopt. Anything to add?
There was, there was discussion in regards to this. A concern that it's, what they want is it to be nonpartisan. So, someone, any of these partisan groups putting in huge sums of money into school board elections. So, that's what this resolution is trying to avoid.
Yeah, yeah, comment before the vote, there is no way that these elections are not nonpartisan. They are partisan as they get.
But they are supposed to be nonpartisan.
What does that, what does that mean? The unions don't get involved, political parties don't get involved?
That means that they're not Democrat, Republican, Libertarian, Green, that's what it means.
I, I, I believe that, I believe, I believe the Democrat Party supported some school board candidates.
So, this, so again, this.
Mr. Kramer, you were also with, you know, supported by.
Madam President, can I point out section four, paragraph 30 of Roberts Rules of Order? Would you like me to read it?
Okay, Mr. Dombrowski, I'm ready.
Debate must be confined to the merits of the pending question. Speakers must address their remarks to the chair, maintain a courteous tone, and especially in reference to any divergence of opinion, avoid interjecting a personal note into debate. To this end, they must never attack or make an allusion to the motives of members. As already noted, speakers should refer to officers only by title and should avoid the mention of other members' names as much as possible.
Okay. Thank you. And that's exactly where I was trying to go, and we've. All right, can we move along then?
All right, so.
Because that's exactly where I was trying to go, Mr. Dombrowski.
Could you please reread the, the motion?
Yes.
No, not, not, not that motion, the motion that we're, we're discussing.
The statement, is it, I'm sorry, is it?
No, the, the, the motion that Ms. Klimkowitz made, that was second.
I'm going to ask Ms. Kason if she has that.
I haven't, oh, okay. Discussion of the resolution and speak on the behalf of the board.
At the, to speak on behalf of the board at the delegates' assembly.
So, I'd like to bring it back to the, the question at hand, which is item, statement, associate, ISB statement number eight, position statement number eight, that the ISB strongly believes that the school board candidates should not solicit, accept, or receive either a donation or financial contribution from special interest groups, political action committees, or political parties. And the Resolutions Committee is recommending to adopt. So, I'm going to ask each board member for their, their thoughts on how the delegate should vote on this particular position statement. Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cavell?
Yes.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Not reality, no.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
And I vote in favor of the ISB advocating for that. And then, do any board members want the delegate representing our board to vote differently than the Resolutions Committee on any of the 14 position statements, deletions, or amendments as have been previously shared with this Board of Education? All right, thank you. With that, I, I close the discussion.
All right. Then that takes us to.
To action on the motion.
Oh, I apologize. Any other discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, that takes us to the Fall Curriculum Committee Report. It's in two separate motions. The first recommended action is that the Curriculum Committee Report and recommendations be approved as presented, except for the freshman wellness and sophomore wellness critical learning standards. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Small, is there anything you want to add to this?
The process of any change in standards comes forward to the board three times a year at fall, winter, and spring curriculum rounds. Standards, changes in textbooks and/or software always comes to the board for review.
Okay, any discussion on this?
I, I understand, Madam President, that the recommendation to include graphic novels to make it more easier for our students, if you will, potentially. But Fahrenheit 451, I think that it's important to be able to read that and use one's imagination. I think if our district is to excel, we, we kind of have to encourage our students to, to do more reading and, and avoid graphic novels and, and other media that, that reduces that. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Graphic novels.
Anyone else?
There's a lot to be lauded in this curriculum report. We have a lot of diverse new books added to the curriculum, which I really appreciate. Very wide variety of authors and perspectives. That includes graphic novels, which are important for all kinds of readers, and that's the commitment that we've made to teach. They're not any less advanced or any less challenging, they are different. I know that, you know, with my age, it's a change. I wasn't introduced to those in a school setting when I was young. But it doesn't mean that they don't offer challenging curricular material. Fahrenheit 451 is still a classic. And so, just wanted to make, I appreciate the diverse perspectives offered on the curriculum report.
Any other discussion?
We're getting into some uncomfortable curriculum changes.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, that brings us to our next recommended action, that the Board of Education approve the new critical learning standards as presented for freshman wellness and sophomore wellness courses. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Small, would you like to begin?
District 211 has a long history of teaching sex education in high school. Until the past few years, it was taught in health class and is now being taught in ninth grade wellness and ninth grade, I'm sorry, 10th grade wellness classes. What we previously called sex education is now called comprehensive sexual health education per Public Act 1020522. The criteria of this law states that the seven national sex education standards must be taught if sexual education is going to be taught. The seven standards include five concepts District 211 has previously taught in wellness classes. The five standards representing the concepts previously taught in District 211 are consent and healthy relationships, anatomy and physiology, puberty and adolescent sex development, sexual health, and interpersonal violence. health, and interpersonal violence. The two new standards of the seven are gender identity expression and sexual orientation and identity. Public Act 102-0522 gives school districts the option of teaching sexual education through these seven standards or not teaching sexual education. The attachment in the agenda details all the standards of wellness, including the one unit on comprehensive sexual education standards. The recommendation before the Board includes continuing to teach sexual health education in our ninth and 10th grade wellness classes with the seven standards. This includes continuing to notify parents who have children in ninth and 10th grade prior to the start of the comprehensive sexual health unit and allowing them to opt their child out of the unit. We hope that every parent or guardian, regardless of their stance on sexual education at high school, is having consistent discussions at home regarding puberty, sexual health, healthy relationships, and decision-making with their children as they mature. If this recommendation is approved by the Board, the comprehensive sexual education unit will be taught in April this year in ninth and 10th grade wellness classes. Parents and guardians of students enrolled in these courses will be notified mid-March of the upcoming unit and given the option to opt their child out of the approximately 10-class-period unit for the entire sexual education unit. In February, the topics of the unit will be posted on the website. This website will also be referenced in the letter to parents in the course, as well as the ability for the, advertise the ability for the parent to contact the teacher or the department chair for additional questions. The national sex education standards are the seven standards I have referenced earlier and are defined in the attachment in the Board Agenda. The Illinois State Board of Education and Legislation has made it clear that it is the standards that are required if sex education is taught. The full 74-page NSES document, of which portions have been quoted in our community, or even the pages that detail the 9-10 grade curriculum, is not required by law, only the seven standards themselves which are reflected in the legislation. At District 211, we value the individuality of each person, create a sense of belonging by ensuring access, opportunity, and support. We value safeguarding the welfare of our students and staff by providing a positive and respectful environment. We respectfully have taught sexual education in the past, and I recommend to continue to teach comprehensive sexual education as presented to our freshmen and sophomores while continuing to notify parents of ninth and 10th graders prior to the start of the unit for opting their child out of the unit on sexual education.
All right, let me open it up for, for discussion then.
So I have some comments.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Thank you. First of all, thank you to the members of our community that have shared their thoughts and opinions on SB 818 and the National Sex Education Standards. My children attended and graduated from our school district. The Board of Education includes former students, current students' parents, former students' parents, a former student's grandparent, and future students' parents. We are all taxpayers, residents, and constituents in this community, just like those in our audience and watching this meeting livestreamed. We are all elected to the Board of Education by thousands of people across our district and community to serve as leaders in our schools, expected to fulfill our mission to serve the needs of our diverse community by providing relevant and rigorous learning experiences, opportunities for involvement, and strong support systems that empower all students to reach their full potential. One of our value statements is safety, wellness, and respect. It reads, "We value safeguarding the welfare of our students and staff by providing a positive and respectful environment and cultivating the physical, social, and emotional well-being of all." The physical, social, and emotional well-being of all. We were elected to represent all taxpayers and residents, the current, former, and yet-to-be parents and legal guardians of students, the current, former, and yet-to-be students of our district. This includes those who voted for us and those who did not. Many of them are also staff in our schools and district administration. We represent everyone in this district and community, regardless of their taxpayer status, marital or parental status, religious affiliation, gender identity, sexual orientation, and whether or not they voted for us. It is all of these people we should listen to and represent and make smart and sound decisions in support of our community and students. I received sex ed in 7th grade. My kids received sex ed in our district schools. Almost all of those raised in our community that attended our district schools learned sex ed in school. For many years, our teachers have taught sex education to our students in our district schools. We did so last year, continue to do so, and will continue to do so. Topics taught have included almost all of the general topics in the 9th and 10th grade curriculum of Senate Bill 818, including consent and healthy relationships, anatomy and physiology, puberty and adolescent sexual development, sexual health, and interpersonal violence. When I joined this Board of Education in 2017, many from our community were voicing their opinions, feelings, and beliefs about gender identity and sexual expression. Several from our community, including some we have heard from tonight and over the past few months, expressed concerns about our passing policy JAA, equal educational opportunities. That policy has provided equal educational opportunities for students in our schools, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. During that time, I heard or spoke with many people across our community against and many people supporting this policy. Those against it warned of students being put in danger as a result. Several in our community, including some we have heard from tonight and over the past few months, expressed support of that policy back in 2017 and 2018. That policy passed by a majority of the Board of Education members and was adopted in November 2019. Since then, the district has put in place thoughtful and safe procedures to support providing equal educational and extracurricular opportunities for all students, including supporting students in a manner consistent with their gender identity. Tonight, we're being asked to approve two new critical learning standards for freshman and sophomore wellness course curriculum. We are not being asked to opt in or opt out of Senate Bill 818. The recommended wellness critical learning standards for comprehensive sexual health education, we are being asked to vote on tonight, include everything we already have and teach on, including, I'll say them again, consent and healthy relationships, anatomy and physiology, puberty and adolescent development, sexual health, and interpersonal relationships. We're being asked to add two topics, gender identity and expression, and sexual orientation and identity. Do these topics sound familiar? They should, as these are already topics included in policies within our district. Tonight, we're not voting on whether or not to teach our children how to perform certain sex acts, use sex toys, or get an abortion pill without a prescription. The fact is that students can learn these from their friends, parents, or on the Internet using one's computer, tablet, or smartphone. Other than perhaps parents telling their kids about these things, should they learn them from their friends and on the Internet, or from within an educational setting with factual information in a safe school environment?
Please.
In a safe school environment?
Ladies and gentlemen, you heard the reading from the Robert's Rules asking for decorum and people being respectful. Please do so. You agreed with it. You agreed with that, please. Please.
If we, if we approve this motion tonight, parents and guardians will have choices. They can get more information about the specific curriculum from the district and schools and decide for themselves the truth of what the information being taught in our schools contain. They can decide whether or not their children will learn this curriculum and information in our schools. If they do not want their children to learn as students about relationships, anatomy, physiology, sexual development, sexual health, interpersonal violence, gender identity and expression, and sexual orientation in a factual manner and safe school environment, they can choose to opt out, and their students will have alternative lessons. Adding gender identity and expression and sexual orientation adds knowledge to our wellness curriculum that will help our students relate and understand the people they may be themselves, their friends, the people they share the school hallways with, the people they may go to college or live with, and the people they may work alongside. It can help them be more prepared to enter the military, workforce, or college.
Please...
It will help them as a member of society. Thank you.
All right, any other comments?
Yes, Madam President, I'd, I'd like a comment. For futu, for future reference, without the permission of the Assembly, no one can speak longer than permitted by the rule of the body, or if a nonlegislative Assembly that has no rule of its own relating to the length of speeches should be limited no longer than 10 minutes. That's section four, or paragraph 29. I won't take 10 minutes. The whole purpose of Public Act 102-0522 was to put the national sexual education standards into the classroom. It is, it is defined specifically as comprehensive personal health and safety education within Public Act 102-0522. Obviously, the vote tonight includes significant changes to the existing D-211 curriculum to align with the NSES. As a representative of this community, a parent of children currently attending these classes, and frankly, just being a decent person, I and many of my neighbors have serious concerns. My comments are not unique and isolated outside of some fictional silent majority of pseudo hermits that the ACLU and Justice Warriors would hope we blindly accept as defeat. This is America where we have many rights and freedoms to prevent oppressive governments at all levels, and among those rights is a freedom of speech. It is sad that in 2022, we find that the ACLU has lost its way. Of the nearly 250 emails I have received, less than 9% have requested District 211 adopt this material. That is not a silent majority. There is no silence on this issue. Both sides are vocal, and the majority supports an opt-out. I know some BOE members believe that your emails do not require response. My family raised me to be polite and courteous to everyone, even those I do not agree with. I learned empathy at home, not in a classroom. It is simply courteous to acknowledge the effort our neighbors took from their busy schedules to share a thought or an opinion. Many parents fear retribution. I extend an extra special thanks to those who have mustered the courage to provide your thoughts in person or via email. My first concern, how did we reach this point tonight? Before Senate Bill 818 was passed by the Legislature, it was discussed at this board table. It was agreed that the Board would deal with the legislation if it passed. In August of this year, the Boards of Education of both our Feeters districts, District 15 and District 54, voted not to adopt this material. Since August, this administration has strategically silenced this community. This administration has presented to students and teachers NSES materials while this Board and parents have been forced to wait to tonight to speak our opinions. Is the administration so insulated and disconnected from the community that they did not anticipate this community response? Did parents come out in mass demanding that District 54 and District 15 provide this material? Is the thought here that the families with a 14-year-old 8th grader is different than the families with a 13-year-old freshman? Again, there is no silence from our community on this concern. I find our administration disingenuous, disconnected, and that is disturbing. How much time and resources have been expended to explore material that a fraction of our community has requested to be implemented? And why? Another concern I have is with what is presented tonight as our action item. This material fails to provide a strategic direction to the administration and fails as an answer from the administration on the question of how it will be implemented. As a Board of Education, it is upon us, the seven elected representatives of this community, to determine the strategic direction of this district. Each of us should ask ourselves if this material will help the next generation achieve success beyond our current generation. Does the NSES help our graduates get into college of their choice? Does it help them on an interview for their career aspirations? Is this material adults would discuss in mixed polite company? Or is it material that we would expect discussed with a doctor or parent in a private setting? Aren't classrooms open to the public, and that was the justification for remote learning? Should this material be discussed openly among 30 students that are still in the process of maturing, or individually by parents attuned to their children's maturity and individual situation? If this has value and is appropriate, please explain the educational value to the community before us. We cannot lose our way, as the ACLU has. My final concern is with the opt-out option for parents. What does that look like? Is there alternative education provided by the district? I think Point 5 of Mr. Schumacher's report stated that we will be providing NSES standards light where we can opt out, but it, that doesn't sound like the description that I received regarding the seven points that either we teach all seven or we don't. Do, do parents have the option to go out of the district? Do they have to pay for it independently to meet graduation requirements? Is it equitable to separate students? Because this is not a one-size-fits-all like reading, writing, and arithmetic. There are some on this Board that have publicly stated they, they are not equipped to teach their own children this material and believe it is better left to someone else. Does this represent our community? Abdicating personal responsibility as a parent? Does this community want to forfeit our rights as parents and install social and moral choices to the whims of NSES? Does our community honestly believe that this material is best implemented through our teaching professionals? I doubt our teachers entered the profession with the desire to be a pass-through of social engineering conducted by NSES and the State of Illinois to our impressionable souls of our children. Unless this administration can show to the community that there's an educational value to the NSES material, clear concise path and expectations for parents to opt out, and demonstrate goodwill providing the classroom material electronically and not requiring in-person attendance at a specific school to review, I cannot support adopting this curriculum at any level for our children.
Any other comments or, any other comments or discussion?
Questions?
Yes.
The, which textbooks are we going to use?
The same textbook we currently use. There's no change in it.
There's no, this is new material, but we're going to use the same textbooks?
That's correct.
Why, why only provide two weeks' notice for parents to opt out? That's, that's in Point 5.
That's, that's in the legislation.
That, that they, that they have two weeks?
The minimum of two weeks.
Why can't we, why can't, why, why can't we do it before then? Like when they're freshmen? Why can't, why are we, why are we only giving parents two weeks' notice to opt out? Why not more time? Is it in the curriculum guide? Where can they read about...
They are freshmen.
Huh?
So it happens during freshman year, and it happens during sophomore year. Both times, they can...
Are they going to, are, are parents going to be provided advanced material for their entering freshmen that they can opt out?
They can see, they can see what's posted on the website. I'm not sure I understand your question. They can see what's posted on the website.
Let me be blunt, two weeks isn't enough time. I mean, it's, you know, people have busy lives, they don't understand what's going on, they may not even understand the material, they may or may not know how to get access to the material. Two weeks isn't enough. Why not do it during registration?
It was a, a minimum of, of the two weeks.
Why not, why not earlier? Why not at registration, really?
What would you, I, I'm not following. What is your suggestion for registration?
At registration, we know, we know that freshmen are going to be taught this stuff. Why not, when the students register, say, hey, look, here's a curriculum that's been changed, you can opt out if you want? Instead of waiting? Okay, you, you, you got my point. You got my point. So, we, we do have the material. Yeah, okay. Comment, this, this has taken the en loco parentis to another extraordinary level. The government has no business telling parents how and what to teach their children about sex. And, oh, by the way... And, oh, by the way, NSES is not national. It's written by a not-for-profit group. This is the only state in the country that has adopted this.[611.12][611.12](APPLAUSE)
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Yes, I have comments.
All right.
Instead of wasting time correcting a long list of absurd lies about comprehensive sex education, I speak directly to common sense people in our community who sincerely care about young people and feel unsure what to believe. Comprehensive sex education teaches teenagers how to prevent pregnancy, how to prevent sexually transmitted infections, how to find accurate information about resources like free HIV testing, how to recognize and escape dating violence, how to protect themselves from sex trafficking. It teaches teenagers about laws setting minimum expectations for their sexual behavior, including that sex should always be a choice freely made, never something forced, tricked, pressured, or pressured out of someone, that Illinois makes various contraception options available to people at different ages under different conditions, and that the creation, sharing, and viewing of explicit photographs of minors, including selfies and self-produced video, is illegal. Considering that the statistical average age of first sexual experience in the United States is 17, people watching might say, "All that information sounds pretty reasonable. Why the hysteria?" The hysteria is really about two standards, which represent the only changes being made to the content this district has taught without issue for years. They are: By the end of 10th grade, students should be able to differentiate between sex assigned at birth, gender identity, and gender expression; differentiate between sexual orientation, sexual behavior, and sexual identity. These standards recognize the existence of queer people, and that's why we're witnessing a giant hissy fit. They don't encourage...
Please, ladies, gentlemen.
They don't encourage teenagers to abandon their religion and change their gender. They define terms... Defining terms is important because all of our students, regardless of who they are or what God they pray to, occupy a world in which queer and trans people exist. Individuals are certainly free to insist all queer and trans people are mentally ill or some version of immoral, but their understandable anxiety about a very rapidly changing world doesn't make the queer and trans students we currently have and are legally obligated to serve disappear. Furthermore, I refuse to deny all our teenage students access to information about pregnancy and disease prevention in order to soothe some of our neighbors' desperate grief for a world they feel is dying. Public schools, at their very best, are one of the last remaining institutions in this fractured country where we, as communities of young and old, secular and religious, partisan and nonpartisan, can learn to live with each other in peace if we choose. A necessary part of that process is deepening our understanding of our neighbors. Kindness does not require agreement, and acknowledging one another's differences does not compromise individual values. Teenagers want to learn certain types of information in health class, like the efficacy of various methods of birth control and the symptoms of different STDs. Comprehensive sex education provides that information, supporting parents and caring adults, and focusing on what teenagers can only learn from them, and that's their values. As a former comprehensive sex education teacher, I know firsthand teenagers want answers to questions like, "What does my family expect from me? What is most important in relationships? How should my faith impact my decisions?" And that's information they can only get from their parents. This curriculum is not a slap in your face. It's a good faith invitation.[903.62][903.62](LAUGHTER) It's an invitation to allow our district to explain that the state of Illinois says the age of consent for all types of sex is 17, supporting you as parents in guiding them to decide whether having sex at 17 is a good idea in the first place. Like all invitations, you're free to refuse. This is content you can opt out of. I respect your right to make that determination, just as I value my own authority in making decisions for my own children, one of whom will be a Palatine pirate here very soon. Respecting people's boundaries is a core tenet of my unitarian universalist faith, which covenants justice, equity, and compassion in human relations, and honors the right of conscience. I support comprehensive sex education out of those very same principles. But, more importantly, I implore all of us to remember that every day, every moment, we make a choice to treat one another as decent neighbors or mortal enemies, and making enemies out of one another, sowing distrust and discord with wild lies and accusations when malice... Terrors at our community bond, and our young people are the ones who pay the price. And that's the real danger here tonight. It's not comprehensive...[1002.82][1002.82](APPLAUSE) And that's the real danger here this evening: Not comprehensive sex education for teenagers.
All right. Any other comments?
I'd probably be...
Dr. McGowan.
Of course. So, it's been a lot of information thrown around today, so I'm sorry I didn't write some... I forgot the address. The conversation is raised, as a parent of three with a student in a district, the reality is education is armor, and it is protection. While we pretend as parents that children aren't having sex, and we pretend that children aren't being exposed to these things...
Please, let him speak.
I'll let everyone else speak. Can I have my turn, please? Be respectful. Jesus. All right. Sure did. So, while we pretend as parents that these things aren't affecting the student body, STDs are alarmingly high in that age group right now. Teen pregnancy is alarmingly high in that age group right now, and sexual assault is something that was... Please let me speak!
We have listened... Excuse me. We have listened to all of our speakers, and I think we've been respectful of you. Please allow the Board members to speak.
So, again, raising two teenagers in District 211, the reality is that all these things are negatively impacting our students and our children. So while we pretend that these things aren't happening, they are harmful and they're not beneficial to the students. One of the biggest things that I can draw focus from is I had to sit in a trial with two children that were sexually assaulted, and the only reason it happened was because these children didn't know the name of their own body parts. This is the reality of the world we live in. I don't make the rules. I... We don't... Okay. So, again, the average age of sexually active teen is 17 years old. So the year prior to that being 16 and 15 is when those feelings and emotions and their curiosity starts taking over. So to have this conversation that sexual education is inadequate, there's plenty to suggest otherwise, there's plenty that tells otherwise. And again, I think it's incredibly important that we give our students all the tools they need to be successful human beings, period. And that includes sexual orientation and gender identities. Again, so I... Again, for the... We are supposed to be set example for these students, and you can't conduct yourself quietly to let me speak. This is the issue. We are the issue.[1168.83][1168.83](APPLAUSE) Jeez. All of this, children watching, and you're telling, "Conduct yourself," and asking someone to be professional. Let's stop. Let's stop. Let's have a... All right. I'm going to wrap this up. I think it's important that students have all the tools they need to protect themselves out in this world. Again, raising a father of three and a fourth one on the way, I think I can say what it is to be a parent and what it means to be a parent in this district. So, thank you for your time and your patience.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay. All right.
Yes, I just have two follow-up questions for Dr. Small. Very, very brief. Dr. Small, is everything in the item that's presented as part of the agenda regarding this curriculum and the standards posted for everybody to see, is everything in there honest and accurate as far as you know?
Yes.
Have you or Mr. Schumacher lied about anything, any kind of information that's in this document for us to discuss tonight?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Question? Did you consult the attorneys for this?
Consult with the attorneys for what we have and don't have in our curriculum.
No, did you consult with the attorney for the verbiage that you provided to the Board?
The verbiage that we provided for the Board is either straight out of the legislation or it deals with the overview of our curriculum. We have consulted with the attorneys and the ISBE along this entire process.
So you have been working with the attorneys?
In terms of how this is presented and what our options are, yes.
What did they say?
They said exactly what we have in here. We either teach sexual education with the seven standards as they're presented, not by the entire book, or we don't teach sexual education.[1278.01][1278.01](APPLAUSE)
Why is it... Why are you, as the chief executive officer of this company, in favor of doing this? Why do you want to do it?
Because sexual education is an important part of an educational experience as a high schooler. We have done this for years, and I recommend we continue to do it with these modifications.
Isn't that more of a parental responsibility?
If you have... If you have a question, ask the question.
That was a question. Isn't that a parental responsibility?
I think we're going to move along because it's really not inappropriate.
I've got one last question, just to clarify and frame everything. This sexual ed... This wellness curriculum was established 2017, 2018?
The course was.
The course was, in 2018. So...
Prior to that, it was taught in health class.
Our conversation tonight is only adding two points to the existing sexual education curriculum.
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
All right. I have two questions, and I think you may have answered it. So if we opt out, we would not be teaching any sex education?
That's correct. The only components that we would be teaching would be anything listed in legislation that is not listed as sexual education.
Okay. All right. We had a gentleman that spoke about topics and some of the topics that are in the state standards. Are there things that we can choose not to be part of our curriculum?
The seven components are listed in the agenda, in the supplementary section, and the seven components are the ones that have been spoken to each time. You cannot leave out a component of comprehensive sexual...
Okay. If we include the components, what about the materials that we would use for the presentations in the classroom?
The materials are not determined by the 74-page packet.
Okay. Those would be materials that we can determine internally, given, you know, some of the concerns of the parents and our staff and our health education people?
That's correct. It has to meet the standard, just the standard, and it has to fit the criteria that it is age-appropriate, equally balanced. There's a set of series that it has to do, but not specifically what is in the packet has to be taught.
Okay.
It's the standard that is listed in front of the Board.
So a lot of the things that were presented are things that we probably would not be or would not present to the students?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. I just have a real quick comment here. I do appreciate the emails. I have tried to respond to some. I have not been able to respond to all. If you sent an email, I apologize. I haven't been able to respond to all of them. We've gotten emails for opting out and emails supporting it, so trying to represent the entire community. I want to share just my thought going along with everyone here. About two years ago, this Board heard from a number of female and male students about harassment, sexual harassment, and bullying. It was important to those students that sexual harassment be addressed to stop the cycle and provide knowledge to identify harassment and what to do if it happens. Some students stated they were never exposed to Aaron's Law. So somewhere along the line, they missed it in the elementary schools. The ability to learn about sexual abuse and how important it is, how to identify it and how to speak up and to get help. Our health curriculum addresses this. Our youth are not afraid to talk about things that are a concern for them. They're asking questions. We just completed an election where the main topics were abortion rights and the appeal of Roe versus Wade. It's vital for our schools to ensure that students have access to accurate information about reproduction and sexual health. Keeping in mind, knowledge is power, and this health education can educate and empower our students. There were a couple of supportive comments that I received that I thought were interesting comments. One was, you know, "Teaching gender identity is important so that we... so that they understand the world around them. To be well-educated, one must know the terms used daily in the world around them, and they cannot catch a gender by defining it." Just because we have knowledge of something doesn't mean we will become things we would not have become without that knowledge. What knowledge does is to remove the ignorance in our society that causes fear and division. I think we've been providing the sex education. I think our students have definitely benefited from it. And from two years ago, when our students came and talked to us about sexual harassment, they were concerned. They needed those conversations. They needed that education. And I think we're trying to maintain that and do what the state requirement is as basic as we can. Because if you take a look at social media, there's a number of things that are happening in the programs the kids are watching. They need to be able to understand that, and hopefully, they're talking with their parents about it also. So, I thank you.
I have one question, Madam President.
Yes.
This is for the Superintendent. In consultation with District 15 and District 54, by opting out, they no longer teach sexual education?
They don't teach comprehensive sexual education. They teach any legislation...[1655.51][1655.51](APPLAUSE) They teach any legislation that is outside of that.
Okay. We can't hear because...
I didn't hear what she said.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear the... Can you repeat?
They would teach any legislation that is not a component of sexual... comprehensive sexual health education for K-8, that is in the other public acts.
Okay.
We're referring to Aaron's Law, Faith's Law, et cetera.
Superintendent Small, did you consult with the other superintendents in 15 and 54?
Yes.
What did they say?
I am not going to speak on their behalf on comprehensive sexual education.[1702.12][1702.12](APPLAUSE)
Madam President, I don't feel this is productive.
That's, you know...
It's not relevant because they're K-8 grade district. This is high school.
Okay. All right. And we do talk to them. Dr. Small has indicated that. There's conversations about all sorts of different curriculums, the special ed, the different curriculums. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. If there's no other discussion, then we'll roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Is that me? Sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Okay. Motion carried. All right. That takes us...[1759.12][1759.12](APPLAUSE)[1760.12][1760.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1761.12][1761.12](APPLAUSE)[1762.12][1762.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1763.12][1763.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1764.12][1764.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1765.12][1765.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1766.12][1766.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1767.12][1767.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1768.12][1768.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1769.12][1769.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1770.12][1770.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1771.12][1771.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1772.12][1772.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1773.12][1773.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1774.12][1774.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1775.12][1775.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1776.12][1776.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1777.12][1777.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1778.12][1778.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1779.12][1779.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1780.12][1780.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1781.12][1781.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1782.12][1782.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1783.12][1783.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1784.12][1784.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1785.12][1785.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1786.12][1786.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1787.12][1787.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1788.12][1788.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1789.12][1789.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1790.12][1790.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1791.12][1791.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1792.12][1792.12](CROWD CHEERING)[1793.12][1793.12](CROWD CHEERING)
Have a great night. Have a good night.
Perfect.
Perfect. Have a good night. Drive safely.
Officers, we'd really like to be able to continue with our meeting, please. All right, that takes us to the next item on the agenda. Is the District 211 professional learning opportunities? The recommend... Okay, the recommended action is that the superintendent be authorized to offer professional learning opportunities for in-district credit as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The next item is, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the school calendar for the 2024-2025 school year and summer school 2025. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
If I may?
Please.
By providing the school calendars in advance, the district can provide notice to students, parents, and staff as they plan for future events. The 2024-25 school year and summer 2025 calendars are presented at this time with the previous year's calendars already approved by the board. Closer to the actual school year starting, early release days, late start days, testing days, open house, et cetera, are presented to the board. In the past two years, legislation has caused us to shift our calendars. Should new legislation come forward requiring any changes in our current holidays, the calendars would be brought forward to the board for revision. We end first semester final exams before winter break and second semester final exams before Labor Day. The ISBE requires students to attend school a minimum of 176 days, and a district is scheduled a minimum of four institute days. District 211 schedules 180 student attendance days, and the four additional student school attendance days allows up to have up to four traditional emergency/weather days without adding school days into our calendar nor requiring a remote learning day. If we have no emergency weather days, our students still attend 180 days of school. Because of these extra days we have built in, if we have emergency weather days, our students will have a traditional snow day with no school.
Any discussion?
Yes. As we know, our community is comprised of a very diverse population of students, administrators, and families. This diversity is rich in ethnicity, race, and religion. In reviewing the 2024-2025 and summer 2025 school calendar proposal, I request that the district equity committee, or close, and each school's equity committee, work closely with individual school and district office leaders to prevent any meetings, extracurricular activities, or programs from being scheduled that will conflict with any religious holiday observances of our students or staff. Students and staff should not have to choose between their religious practices and school lessons or activities. Programs should be scheduled so as to avoid such conflict. Accommodations for class exam makeups should be made available without penalty for those students unable to attend school due to religious observations. Thank you.
Excuse me, question, how many, I mean, we're pretty diverse, we know that. Diwali, Rosh Hashanah, would you have no, would you have no athletic activities or school activities done on all of those days?
On holidays, I would recommend that on holidays where a student has to choose between participating in a program or activity, or their religious obligation or affiliation, that we should seek to avoid having those programs scheduled on those days. And I'm not talking about every holiday, but I'm talking about those that their, that their faith finds them in need of attending a faith-based program, or church, or synagogue, or otherwise, and not be able to go to a sports program, or choir concert, or take an exam, for instance.
I want to clarify, are you, because it sounded to me like you're asking for the Equity Committee and relevant subcommittees to simply review the calendar?
That's all I'm asking for. And make recommendations so that teachers and instructors and athletic directors and coaches seek to avoid that conflict.
If I may, the Equity Committee had already planned on having a discussion about the diversity across our district and the calendar. So that will fit into what they're already doing. And if I also may add, any students who do miss class exams, whether it is for a religious holiday, or really any excused component from their parents, they do have additional time to make up whatever they missed.
Yeah.
Exams or homework.
I'm not opposed to the idea, but I think we need to see a calendar of Muslim, Jewish, Catholic, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, to see how many days we would be effectively blanking out.
From my understanding, that's what the Equity Team will be doing.
Well, but can we give, can we task them to provide a calendar? Where all of the different religious aspects be put in one place so we can see it?
It's a standard American calendar, it has them on it.
I don't, I think the school district should have a calendar.
Well, we do. Any calendar that we have here, or can provide, even if you have an iPhone, your iPhone will acknowledge those holidays as well.
I'd like the district to provide one.
Dr. Small, can, what exactly will they do? Will they take a look at, maybe highlight the holidays for the particular cultures, and then insert that possibly into our calendars? So maybe Mr. Kramer can see that. Not that we would necessarily not have activities on that particular day, but...
I will tell you, it is a discussion item for the district Equity Team. I'm going to let them come back with their discussion and bring that back to us, as opposed to guiding the discussion.
The board can't direct the Equity Team to provide that, to direct the superintendent to provide a conference calendar?
They're working on that, and I think, you know, we want to empower that group of young people and the adults that are participating in there to come to us with some information as to their culture and what's important to them.
When will that information be provided to the board?
They are starting the discussion next week.
Will it be provided next month?
I don't know when they'll be done with the discussion, but when it was done, we can give you an update after each meeting.
Okay, it could be a semester before...
We'll give you an update after each meeting.
Thank you. Would you please put that on the agenda?
Well, usually we get that in...
The committee reports.
The committee reports.
Okay.
That's where we come.
An additional question, Madam President?
Yes.
For the superintendent, was this calendar and associated breaks coordinated with the feeder districts, D-15 and 54?
So the calendars are sent to the feeder districts. We do not have the exact number of school days, so our calendars never match up exactly. But we do give them the information so that they have the winter breaks and the spring breaks.
So they have the choice of following us or not following us, assuming that our calendars, our calendar we provided is before they move with their calendar, correct?
Yes, and if they do their calendar first, they give it to me.
And then we coordinate?
We would look to get as close as we can with the differences within our schedules.
Thank you.
And you also have to keep in mind, District 214 is part of that with District 15 students. So that's another consideration there. All right, any other discussion? Okay, then roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
That takes us to the next item, that the Board of Education approved the migration to traverse a transportation software for a three-year term as presented at an initial annual cost, including implementation fees not to exceed $55,861. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
The recommendation is for a program that is in the same suite of the system currently used by our transportation department. However, the new software is hosted in the cloud, provides more real-time updates, improving route capabilities, in fleet, excuse me, enhanced fleet management software, and a workflow solution for our chartered routes. These provide greater flexibility and reliability for our transportation department. It will be continually updated as it's supported in a cloud-based solution, and we will be providing a new mobile app solution for our parents potentially next year. That is probably more efficient for them.
Any other, any questions or discussion?
Yes. Oh, go ahead. No, it's fine.
So that would prevent things like ghost buses, or whatever the, I've heard about?
Ghost bus is, Ms. Hummel, do you know what a ghost bus is?
That's when, that's when a parent or a student is tracking our transportation to their particular stop and learn that it's not accurate?
My understanding is this app should be more effective than our current app.
Okay.
And this was what I was going to make comment on. When I first joined the board, I was on the, I was a liaison to the parent committee, and this was actually the biggest topic in that committee, was difficulty with this software that parents really rely on. So I'm excited to see the solution presented. I really hope it delivers on what we see here, and I'm hoping that we will get an update and parent feedback. You know, both informally, of course, but also formally through our various committees. I want to make sure that this actually improves their experience.
Does the contract include upgrades or changes to their software without additional cost? Software is not static, I'm an IT guy. So sometimes it's going to be changed. Do we have to pay extra for that?
The annual subscription fee would include any updates, patches, anything like that that's included. And then you can see there what the three-year software cost is for the package. So anything, any improvements that they make based upon user feedback or otherwise would be included in that annual subscription fee.
What happens if the app is non-functional because of a change? I'm an IT guy, that does happen.
The app or the software?
Well, the app, the software is the app.
Well, just to clarify, we were talking about a parent app earlier, but now you're talking about the entire software system?
Right, it's an entire software package. And changes are made periodically, and sometimes the changes aren't right. They got to shut it down, back it out, and that sort of stuff. Do we assume any other risk there?
Well, if there is, similar to any software company, there is provision which would be included in the contract that would specify what happens if there's downtime, and we would try and minimize that downtime per contractual language. I cannot say that there would never be an issue or some sort of downtime with the software supported. However, what I can say is that with it being cloud-based, and there are a team of supports that are on this software, it is far more reliable than it would be served on our existing servers.
Is that provision in the contract? That if it's not working, we don't pay for, we don't pay for the days of service that we don't have?
There is a provision that is in there that specifies what the acceptable downtime is.
Okay.
And then anything beyond that, there would be credit to the district.
The benefit is the buses still turn on and run, and the drivers still get in and get on their routes.
Drive one.
All right, any other discussion?
I just want to comment that I appreciate Mr. Kramer's subject matter expertise in this area, I really do, and value his experience to ask some very pertinent and poignant questions.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, that takes us to the next recommended action is that the Board of Education award the business for mechanical equipment pre-purchase for James B. Conan High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Rucker Company, for $179,955. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to know, what made the almost $100,000 difference between some of the bids? What goes from $179 to $295? What was the differences in those bids? Just out of curiosity.
For the mechanical equipment pre-purchase, it's just a function of the costs that's put through by the company. The bid specifications do not change by vendor, but it's just a function of the bidding.
Also, from my visits, what I've learned that a lot of it has to do with supply chain. Whether a company has these material in stock, or how much of it, they have to outsource.
And these are closed bids, is that correct?
That is correct.
So they can't really say, oh my gosh, there's a company bidding by $100,000 less, we should lower our bid. It is what it is.
No, that is correct. It's a public bid opening.
The pricing that I've read is a million bucks for two schools, and one school that we don't need to do it in. I think that's...
Hoffman Estates currently has all of their applied tech classrooms cooled. So this is for the first two schools that we're presenting to the board. The other two schools would come later.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it's uncomfortable when you're hot, I understand that. How many days a year would, do we actually have a heat issue? Where it's too hot for the students to do what they do?
I've been in the classrooms, and one day is too many for some of these students.
I also was in all those class, and it was extremely hot or extremely cold, depending on the season. So it's a legitimate concern.
I'd like to also point out that it is a safety risk, because I took wood shop at Palatine High School as an adult, and the only way to properly cool that room and regulate the temperature is to prop open the exterior door. So, you know, that's a no-go. You can't prop open the exterior door anymore, that is an absolute no. So it's a hot box or a cold box in there. We've removed the only solution that they currently had without the HVAC system.
I never did woodworking shop. Was it hot in there because of the machine was generating heat?
Everything, yes.
Yeah, there's a huge amount of equipment in there, including like a dust collection system that operates no matter what, regardless of the weather, because it has to do with the dust collection, it doesn't have to do with the weather. So yes, and plus it's a difficult space. You're working with very high ceilings and sometimes narrow spaces. So yeah, I mean, even when I was, when I was in there using the equipment, and we're a third of the size of what your average wood shop class is at Palatine High School, 12 adults using the equipment in there, and it was in the middle of November, so it was freezing outside, we still had to prop the door open.
Okay. Have we factored in maintenance costs going forward on installing basically a brand-new system with a lot of modifications to what we currently have?
Maintenance costs of it breaking, or just upkeep?
Well, upkeep, yeah, upkeep. I mean, there are significant changes in the infrastructure.
Yes, we have our own preventative maintenance and central maintenance force teams which provide the routine maintenance on all of our mechanical systems. Certainly, there would be a warranty associated with the equipment for a period of time, which would cover anything in the initial phase. And there are going to be longer-term costs that are associated with it. This is consistent with... are associated with it. This is consistent with the systems that we're providing in all other areas of our buildings, with exception of the gymnasium.
What, what, what's, what's an example of a warrant? About how long does a, does a warranty valid for?
Uh, do you know if it's a year or is it two years? Two, two years is what, on the equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, as a, as a Board of Education member in this district who have, who has attended six of our school open houses, I have experienced going into our applied technician, our applied tech areas, especially my very first open house. I remember going to Palatine High School, and our open houses are held at the beginning of the school year. And it was at least 95, if not over 100 degrees in that room in the evening after a very hot day, and I was in that room with a group of parents following a student's schedule with no equipment on, listening to the, the teacher talk about the, the educational programs and machines that the students were using in that room. And all I could think of was it is hot in here, and I can't wait to get out, number one. And number two, how can a student use any of this, quite frankly, dangerous equipment, wearing proper, you know, proper goggles and gloves and maybe a coat of some kind while it's 100 degrees in here? And I had grave concerns back then of the safety and well-being of our students in that classroom environment. It was unhealthy, and it was dangerous. So, I have been advocating for, for cooling in these applied tech rooms to provide our students with a safe and healthy and educational environment. And I think that having this equipment is, is wonderful and will certainly allow them to be able to do that.
Question, how do we, how do we determine which two schools would be first?
In this particular case, we have, Palatine High School has a portion of their classrooms done, so this is a tie-in to be able to complete that work. That is one of the schools that we have the hardest time regulating. And then Conant, their school, we did not want to do both schools on either end of the district. Conant High School has similar setup as far as the number of classrooms that are un-air-conditioned over there. So, it really was a function of just balancing our summer school classes and what, where the students are, and then the, the-
Follow-on question then. We picked two schools, and one of them is, is already kind of partially done. Do the, do the, to the remaining two schools have, is it bare bones? Have they, do they have any of the work in, work right now? I mean, because the, the price is going to go up, because one of them here, Palatine, is, I don't, 50%? 20%? I don't know.
Yeah, when we provided the board with an estimate, this falls within the estimate. It's actually, it's slightly lower than what the estimate was provided to us for those two particular schools. So, we are, we do have estimates on all of the schools, and that was the information that was presented to the board when the act, the vote was taken.
Have you prepared a preliminary estimate for the other two schools?
We do. We have an estimate for all, all four of the schools. Right now, we are, you know, our hope is that we would do the next two schools the following summer.
Can you provide that, what, what the estimate is for the-
Was that at a previous meeting?
It was.
That was part of our capital improvement, so it's, it's all been given to us.
Well, I don't remember-
It was about $3 million across, for all schools.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The next item is that the Board of Education award the business for applied technology and mechanical improvements, base bid two for Palatine and James B. Conan High Schools to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder as listed below. Number three, General Trades Monarch Construction Company, $203,800. Five, Fire Protection, United States Alliance Fire Protection, $84,054. Number seven, HVACC, Acetilly Heating and Piping Contractors, Inc., $463,000. Number seven, number eight, Electrical Newcastle Electric, Inc., $223,000. Total, $973,854. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, if there's no discussion, then roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right, then that takes us to potential topics for future discussion.
I, I, I have one. There, I think I saw a couple of emails about different schools doing different things with, with cellphones, kind of sequestering them. I think we should, we need to have a policy review so that we're standardized on, on what we're doing in each school. I mean, I, it's, it, it's piecemeal.
I'll tell you, here's another data mark on the calendar, because you and I, I, this is the same thing that I wanted to bring up. I was going to wait till next month. I've been talking about the same thing. I absolutely agree. I absolutely agree.
In our policies, do we have anything on cellphones currently?
I, I've got it right here.
Pardon me?
It's, it's policy JFCL. It talks about electronic devices. It's seriously outdated from, from April 15, 2013. So, I mean, we gotta, we gotta change, because so, it's, it's different now.
Okay.
We have iPads, we got telephone, so it really, it really needs, needs to be reviewed by the policy committee.
Okay, is there consensus then for the policy committee to review that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Additionally, if there's any discipline related to that, I would recommend that that go back to the discipline committee that we're supposed to be maintaining.
A clarifying comment, too, for the policy committee, because my, the question that I was going to bring up about this is that certainly we set district policy, but, you know, when I've been talking to staff and students and parents, we have wildly different policies between buildings in our district. You know, we have students at Schaumburg report wildly different rules that they have to follow than students at Fremd. And my, my question was actually going to be for Dr. Small, the administration. I don't know if the policy committee is the place to ask about that. We can set district policy, but I don't know how detailed that's going to be, if that's going to mean that we're setting, you know, on-the-ground rules for usage in schools, and whether or not building-level administrators would find that helpful or not helpful.
So, there's two points of consideration. One, there are the policies, and then there's two, there's the calendar handbook, which is, has the student procedures behind it. Those are the two components that we'd be looking at. When there are, everything said like wildly different, it is always helpful for me to have specifics of what people are saying are wildly different. So, if you could share those with me?
Yeah, so, some students at Schaumburg say that they're under the impression that they're not allowed to use their phones unless they're at, like, leisure time, lunch, breaks, et cetera. Phones are not meant to come out of pockets in any classroom. You're not meant to use them at all. Whereas, students and staff at Fremd report having theoretical administrative, you know, backup to implement those kind of rules in their particular classroom, but it's not a shared understanding school-wide that you're not using your phone in class. More left up to individual teachers. That's not the impression that the teachers that I was talking at Schaumburg have, as an example.
I'd, I'd like to add some comments on this. It's not only different between schools, but to Mrs. Cavill's point, it's different between classrooms. Some teachers, I, I saw this firsthand during open house, some teachers have a, I don't know what you call it, a shoe store, like a closet, your shoe closet holder on the wall, and some of them have it at the front, at the door to the classroom, and every student, as they walk in, they drop their phone in there. Another classroom had it, if you were misusing your phone, you had to put it in the shoe, in the shoe, I don't know what you call that, shoe-
Hotel.
Shoe hotel. So, you had to drop your, your shoe in there. And I know, for instance, at, and I totally understand it's, it's part of the program, for Operation Snowball, they all turn in their cellphones at the beginning of the program, and they all get them back at the end of the program. But I understand that that has a lot to do with the program itself and reasonings for them not to have their cellphones to, to be able to concentrate on the material. Maybe that's why some of the teachers are doing it, too, because they're finding that their students in their cla, so, so in that regard, it's classroom management, right?
Yeah.
So, whatever policy we put in place, if it's going to be at the district level, you know, how do we decipher between district, school, and classroom?
Well, this is, I, I just, jumping off Mr. Kramer's point, I just wanted to make sure that we get advice from our actual staff about what would actually be helpful when we're looking at that policy, rather than just a cut-and-dry policy review that other things have maybe gone through.
Well, Mr. Schumacher is a wizard writing policies. The, the other thing is safety and security. I mean, I, the, there's no question, if we have an active shooter, we want, we want the students to have that cellphone. Readily handy, not, not in some shoebox.
And, and to piggyback on, on Mr. Kramer, we've heard from parents in our community regarding their thoughts on cellphone use, too. So, and, you know, whether or not the, the schools should be holding their students' cellphone, right? You know, it's their cellphone. What if they have an emergency or need to get ahold of them or what have you? So, I think it's definitely something that needs to be reviewed.
All right, just to kind of clarify and recap, we'll look at our cellphone policy, and then the procedures, and how they are at each of the school. The administration can take a look at that and probably provide us with some information in regards to that. I'd really like to see us utilizing our students to get some input from them, because if they're seeing a problem, and some of them really don't like some other kids pulling out their cellphone and using it during class time, because it is distracting to them. So, I'd really like some input from our students in regards to it. So, if it comes from the safety committee or whichever committee, input from our, from our kids, because they're the ones that are going to have to follow through on it, whatever ends up being decided.
Can we put a, can we put a timeline on this? I mean, it, it could drag on forever.
Well, let's take a look at what administration has to do. Mr. Schumacher to take a look at the policy, and I'm certain we could probably get into the policy quicker than some of the other things. Dr. Small, what are your thoughts?
Cellphone use in class is a part of classroom management.
Okay. So, hopefully, within the next couple of months, we can have some more information. I don't know about December, but hopefully, maybe in January.
January, Mr. Schumacher?
I will email you tomorrow about setting up a policy committee review date.
I, I didn't hear you.
He's going to set up a date.
He's going to email you.
He's emailing tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Or, it'll be this morning. All right, thank you. Okay, again, I would, I would ask, I do appreciate, you know, the topics and everything, but I would appreciate maybe a heads-up. We've talked about that. The same thing with administrators. If you've got questions, and we get our, our board agenda and information, if you can call the respective administrator or Dr. Small to see about getting some answers prepared, which would be helpful. All right, then that takes us to committee reports. I will try to be very brief on NSSEO. We had a couple of presentations at our last board meeting, which was November 2. We are utilizing through N, NSSEO, a company called HumanX, and they're helping with, dealing with, they specialize in supporting their, their partners through equity, through talent acquisition, through culture, climate surveys, and working with the staff to have them moving forward. One of the items that they presented to us was that they've been doing this for a couple of years now, for two years. They are moving forward. They do surveys with the staff, with the administration, to see how they are progressing. There's, some of the items that they cover is, is the climate. The climate has been very positive. It's been moving forward. The retention of staff is, is there. There's a, a number of new staff that have come in. They've been able to fill most of the positions. There's still some vacancies, but they've been working on it. And they work on climate and, and the culture within there. That was one item that they presented. And the second item was about the RTO plan, the restraint and timeout, because that's really an important factor there at NSSEO. And Kristy Crabtree, who's the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, she just does an excellent job of, of providing us with information in regards to this. They looked at the restraint and timeout and how that's working. She talked about two things that come up when you look at restraint and timeout. It's complicated, and it's complex, and she talked about that. When she talked about it being complicated, she said that it has, like, an example of dominoes. There's a system, there's spacing, there's et cetera, you know, everything else that goes with it, but usually you have an answer. It's complicated, but there's an answer. When you look at something that's complex, that deals with the human system. And she indicated that you can do something, but you can't predict the exact result. So, as they look at the restraint and timeout and different ways of dealing with the students that they have, there's a variety of things that, that factor into it. So, they continue to work at it to come up with the best solutions for the students that they have there, for our special needs students. So, she did an excellent presentation there. We've also talked about, again, with our superintendent search, we'll have some more information. Some surveys have gone out to the staff. They've gone to the superintendents from our member schools. Surveys have gone out to people, to the families. The current board members and alternates are being interviewed, or information is being sent out to them for the surveys. So, we're progressing along in regards to the superintendent search. All right, that would take us, then, to EdRed.
Okay, I'm also going to try to be short. I know nobody believes that, but I, I'm going to try. So, EdRed had a joint meeting with the Northwest, what's it called, School Business, School Business Officers.
Lawrence people.
Yeah, Lawrence, Lawrence folks, Lawrence, Lawrence peeps. We had a joint meeting. I, I did attend. It was held live at Main East High School, but also it was on Zoom. So, I attended by Zoom, as did Dr. Small and Mrs. Hummel. So, I know we all attended that. The meeting featured a presentation on property tax initiatives, an overview of new recapture laws, and a snapshot of the influx of migrant students by Main, Main Township School District 207 leaders. And it was very, very informative how they're tracking that, and more importantly, how they're treating the immigrants into their school district that are being set up in hotels and are needing all kinds of, of assistance from food to transportation to employment and medical attention, and that they provide as much of that as they can as a school district for these people, to help them get established in the community or move on to another, another place. So, it was very, very informative. The next date for EdRed's annual legislative dinner is January 23. And they're actually going to have a follow-up conversation, because there was so much very rich dialogue around helping immigrants. And I know we had some conversation here, I believe it was last month as well, just touching on that. But there was so much rich conversation that they're having a follow-up conversation scheduled for Thursday next week, November 17. So, so they're going to have that as well for, for anybody who wants to, to attend and learn even more about that. That's it from EdRed for me.
Thank you. Community and Family Service Report, Mr. Dombrowski or Mr. McGowan?
I was only able to attend one of the two meetings. There was a meeting today at- There was a meeting today at Palatine Library for the Palatine United Coalition. I couldn't make that one. But the, the meeting that was for the south portion of the district occurred October 24th. There was a bus update regarding migrants. There's over 3,200 in Chicago as of October. Title 42 policy was put into effect. I believe that's with regard to seeking asylum. Schaumburg Township Food Pantry is providing pre-packed bags. They went over trunk-or-treat for, for Halloween, because this was the week before. There are two openings for bus drivers at the township. They're talking about senior benefits associated with that. And then Schaumburg Township Library is hosting immigration consultations where they bring in immigration attorneys to the library for, I think, four-hour durations. I think they're on an ever-two-week cycle, if I recall. Then there was some discussion regarding transportation being an issue with Harper. And then District 54 is collecting coats for the winter season, and that was most of the discussion at that meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Dombrowski, I have a follow-up with that. For the township with the two bus driver openings, are they requiring CDLs?
I didn't ask. I don't believe that those vehicles would require a commercial driver's license, but I'm sure you could inquire.
All right, and then the 32, was that 100 or 1,000 immigrants?
That was 3,200.
3,200. Do you know what percentage of an increase that is?
That's all they said, was that currently that count was over 3,200.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, then that takes us to the Illinois Association of School Boards' reports.
So, I'd like to talk about the resolution. I'm just kidding, we're not going to talk about this again. So, there was a North Cook Division meeting on Wednesday, October 26th, at Evanston Township High School. Dr. Small, Mrs. Klimkowitz, and I attended from our district. If you've never been to Evanston Township High School, it is ginormous, if that's such a word. You know, I was explaining it to somebody. I've been to Lane Tech also. That's also a humongous school. But, but Evanston Township High School can hold upwards of 6,000 students, which they had back in the baby boomer time, right? And the whole school's in the shape of an H. And we did get a tour before, before the, the, the meeting and, and got an opportunity to see some of their different programs. And the most impressive for me was their auditorium. So, if you ever get a chance to attend a production at Evanston Township High School's auditorium, it is first-class, world-class auditorium and very, very impressive. So, the, the program was entitled Our Equity Journey, Evanston Township High School. And the superintendent and board president from that, that high school presented to us around their journey on equity and inclusion, because when you have a school that's so large, serving such a, a large community, the diversity in one location, and how they have to manage that. I mean, they also have a health facility, a medical facility right there in-house that students can go and get vaccinations and check that they don't feel good and all kinds of things. So, very, very impressive environment. Mrs. Klimkowitz or Dr. Small, do you have anything to add from our experience?
Yeah, I, I think you covered it well.
All right, and there are some upcoming programs through Illinois Association of School Boards that I wanted to let this board know as well as the community, and that's that they have an ongoing webinar series on how to run for school board. And they have a couple of programs coming up. November 30th is petition filing, and December 8th is understanding the board member's role. Now, both of these are free and available to the public. If anybody wants to attend, they could go to the ISB website and find out more information about logging in for those webinars. That's my update.
All right, I'm going to add to that for the IASB report. I'd like to recognize Steve Rosenbloom for achieving the Established Board Leader Award from the Illinois Association of School Boards. And the IASB School Board Leader Recognition Program recognizes school board members for the individual time and effort devoted to learning and leadership activities provided by the IASB, such as the Joint Annual Conference, division meetings, the delegate assembly, as well as workshops and online courses. We're grateful for Steve's commitment of service to public education and appreciate all that he does for the District 211 community. And. All right. Thank you. Thank you for what you do. All right, so the next item is announcements. There's our calendar of events. And then that will take us to closed session. The recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act. Probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body. And appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. If you vote no on this motion, then we do not need to go into a closed session. If you vote yes, then we would go into a closed session. Any discussion? All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley?
No.
Ms. Cavill?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No. All right, the next recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the resolution and order dismissing for cause Jean Hedgepath as a tenured teacher. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Approve the resolution. Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Abstain.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The motion carries. At this time, if there's no other business to come before the board, then the board president declares this meeting of the Board of Education adjourned at 11:46.